This meeting is being broadcast live on the web, on the Public City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects. Further, be aware that the microphones pick up side conversations. Although this is a private meeting, only the presenters and those seated at the council table may speak or ask questions on us, otherwise directed by the chair. We will begin with a roll call. Mr. Strachan?
That's Strachan.
Gary Millward.
George Hanley.
Nick Nack.
Gary Larrington.
David Parting.
Hannah Solskell.
George Stewart.
Dave Sewell.
Wayne Parker.
Isaac Paxman.
Thank you. We will begin with prayer, provided by Mr. Richard.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful this day for the opportunity we had to meet the city officials, and we're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve. Father, we love our city, and we're grateful for the blessings we received by being here, and we're grateful for the people that worked so hard to make this a great place. We pray that as we make decisions today, that we'll have thy Spirit with us, that we will be inspired to know the things that thou would have us do, to continue to bless this community. We're thankful for the residents, and again, the people that work so hard. We ask thee that thou would watch over and be with our community in all that we do. We say this in the name of our son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you very much. It is proposed that we approve the minutes for meetings on March 5th, March 19th, March 28th, May 28th, and June 20th. Are there any changes requested of these minutes? Are there any objections to the approval of these minutes? See, none. These minutes are now approved by unanimous consensus. Item two is a budget discussion regarding changes to the fiscal year 2018/2020 legislative budget. This will be presented by Mr. John Gorgit, our Director of Administrative Services, and this budget is the 2018.
Okay. So I'm going to invite Kelsey to come up. Kelsey and I have worked closely, but she's done a lot of the work behind making sure that we provide you a detailed reconciliation, and we can hand those out. We also have an electronic copy pulled up, and so let me go ahead and roll. Would you all like an actual hard copy, or would you prefer to just see it on the screen? Is that okay? If you decide you want a hard copy, we've got it.
George, you go.
John, why don't you just send it around?
Okay, we can do it. And if you want one, you can keep one. It's front and back, and then the last page, so it's a two pager with front and back. So.
So first of all, this is not what it seems. It's like three pages of changes, but it's not because there were a ton of changes. There were two entries. One was an insurance chargeback for departments that affected a lot of funds. So in the effort to just be transparent, we just listed what was affected by the two chargebacks. And so you'll see, as you look through the reconciliation by the forms, that there's a line that says workman's comp and insurance chargeback adjustments, but it carries a lot, and so that's just because of that change. Insurance, I think, we had anticipated higher premiums, but then when we got the actual estimate back from our consultant, they were a lot lower than what we had originally put in there, so it saved the department some money. And then there was a workman's comp adjustment that John might be able to explain a little bit more about.
It was similar. For our regular property insurance, we had been concerned that we were going to have some significant increases, so we budgeted for those. And then when we actually got the numbers from our broker, they were lower. And then with workman's comp, I came in about $45,000 lower when we got the information from the fund, and so that was positive. And it kind of has a ripple effect as it goes through all the funds, and so that's one of the biggest significant changes.
Yeah. So that's probably what you'll see the most of on these changes, so again, it's not something we need super alarmed about. I'll just go through a few of the changes that affected the general fund and just a few of the other changes that you might find of note. First of all, property tax revenue for the general fund came in a little bit lower than what we predicted by almost $60,000, but luckily that was offset by a few changes. Miscellaneous revenue increased by about $22,000 or about $23,000. Again, the decrease in estimate for insurance kind of helped out the general fund. Police vehicle repair had been overbudgeted for by a little bit, so we were able to help increase the general fund by $47,000. If you look at, there's the golf course inner fund loan. You approved an appropriation for the golf course a few weeks ago, and so that affected some things in the budget. If you look under general fund, it says transfer out to golf for inner fund loan interest expense. Previously, there hadn't been a general fund transfer to the golf course, but now there is because the golf course needed help paying back some of the inner fund.
That's the mountain vista loan that we are going to pay back through increment that's generated by the improvements there at the golf course, and so we are just accounting for that in the golf course, because that's where the improvements are going to be made, and it's just an interfund interest account. The other thing I would mention is we did get the certified tax rate from the county, and we try to estimate what that's going to be. The library was actually a little under there, it actually came in a little higher, the general fund came in a little lower. That's what we're looking for.
So overall, even though there were some changes to general fund, the fund balance is still, the net change is zero, and so it's pretty solid there. Again, golf course fund reflects that transfer from the general fund. There was also a slight salary expense decrease in golf course fund that we showed there.
We could scroll down a little bit.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if there's anything specific to note. Between the wastewater and water fund, wastewater had in the past transferred some money to the water fund, and Jimmy McKnight and Dave Becker had analyzed that. I don't know if you care to elaborate more on that, but basically, the decision was to eliminate that transfer from wastewater to water fund, and so you'll see that reflected in wastewater and water, that effect. And again, a lot of these are just workman's comp and insurance adjustments.
Kelsey, can I ask you a question? You said that our police repair expense was reduced on their vehicles. Did we reduce? You said that we're overbudgeted.
Yeah, the chargeback to pay for vehicle repairs, I'm trying to remember this exactly. David, do you remember his?
I can think of that. I want to as well. Okay. We, so we anticipate repair expenses to be in the coming year, and we budgeted chargebacks accordingly. We had anticipated an increase in police, potentially due to some of the aging vehicles and some of the new officers being potentially added in the budget. But we determined, as we look at later on in the paper today, that based on what we've seen so far this year, that we didn't need, police wouldn't need that much in repairs in the coming year. They've got, with what we've got coming off of the old vehicles, the new ones, and what we've seen this year, we feel like there won't be a big of an increase to repair budget in the coming year.
And that's, and I appreciate that. My concern is, are we pushing off repairs, I guess? You feel fairly comfortable that we are taking care of the repairs that we need, and I just didn't want this to be the reduction, the part where we're going to get that money from less tax revenue.
And I would add that the reason for the change wasn't to provide for other changes. It was really just, as we looked more closely at the data, we tried to utilize all the time that we have with the budget, and then we'd get more information, and then we're able to make better estimates. We try to include those if we can, and that's what happens. And so we feel confident that's the right number to use.
Yeah. I think the other thing to note is library fund changed quite a bit. The reason for this is when Dustin was here, he had kind of given library a heads-up that they could expect an anticipated property tax increase for library, and we had built that revenue into the tentative budget, that expected revenue increase, but library, in the meantime, had been making some adjustments to what they thought their expenses would be, and so it looks like we had a big increase in expense to library, but really, it was just, we had included the revenue in the tentative budget, but not the additional library expenses that they wanted to use that revenue for. And so this is just kind of how their different functions were affected. Some functions, they took money away from, some they added to, just so that the overall library budget was able to have some of that tax revenue increase.
I would add too, that if there are questions or concerns, we could definitely, before the budget's adopted tonight, we could have some conversation, or we could have Gene Helsin kind of provide more information, but if they just kind of went through, did some further look at their budget, they wanted to make some changes that were not included within the budget.
I think the only, besides like workman's comp and insurance chargebacks, the Cubby Center, we decreased the general fund transfer to the Cubby Center, just because some of the adjustments from workman's comp and insurance offset that a little bit, and so just to make it balanced, we felt that we didn't need to have such a large transfer from the general fund. The rest, I believe, are those insurance and chargeback, the insurance and employee benefit chargebacks. So if you have more questions about those, we can answer those, but really, that was the bulk of the change in the budget.
And I would add, if you go down at the bottom here, the net change, that's all funds in the city. The net change was 78,092 impact on the, it actually was an increase in fund balance slightly, and so in my experience, it's pretty clean, not many changes from the tentative budget, and so, but we want to be transparent, and we're open to answer any questions or anything we have.
Any questions? I do have one. So basically, we're estimating an additional almost $8,000 to go into fund balance. It's kind of a net.
For the total of the funds.
And none of it in the general fund. The general fund still is zero, but from other funds, yes.
From other funds, okay. That, that's correct. And then this tentative budget, rammed in, adopted budget, roughly $3 million. Help me understand, what is that?
That is the net increase in fund balance for all of the city funds, if you look at them all. And there's a, in the budget document, there is an all-fund summary and another fund summary that shows what makes up that $3 million and where it's coming from. And as I remember from when we had our earlier discussion, a big part of that, I believe, is coming from the wastewater fund, is trying to accumulate funds so they can pay for the treatment plan. But there are other things, and you could look at, if you, we'd be happy to pull it out and review it, you know, tonight or this afternoon, but that's what that number means.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's, that's helpful. So before, if you look at the net difference in our various funds, tentative budget was just under $3 million, you know, because of the $8,000 difference, you know, slightly over. Correct. Okay, thank you.
And that chart is in the budget document. It's called the, it's the fiscal year 20 budget by fund. I think it's page 41. I can't remember for sure, but again, we can pull that out and show you the reconciliation if you're interested in that as well.
I'm just curious about the wastewater fund transfer that was eliminated. Is this because of the wastewater plant? Or, I mean, help me understand.
Jimmy or Agent Fonda?
Yeah, so then there's quite a few projects going on in wastewater fund, including the treatment plant, so the west side of the structure, as well as utility preparation work at the airport for the general. Just the combination of all those, we felt like it was appropriate to leave that money in wastewater fund, and go towards both projects instead of making that happen with the water fund issue.
What, does that have any implications at all for water then?
Well, we feel like, it does, because it would be less that money in water, but we feel like where the water fund is, the situation in the water fund is a lot more healthy than wastewater, public, and then on projects.
If I could follow up on that, what is the logic on the normal year? Why would, why do we normally transfer money from wastewater to water?
So we have several employees in Public Works that we work for both funds. Rather than split their funding, we just fund them out of one place and go and transfer them.
Thank you. That's helpful. Any other questions? All of us?
And the revised, the adopted version of the budget will be available online by tonight's meeting, probably in the next few hours. We just wanted to make sure that we had the reconciliations squared away, and pop that up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Great job. We will move to item three, a discussion regarding appropriation for the airport operating budget. This will be presented by Mr. Drew Knight.
Jim is gaining some weight.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for this, too. Actually, we'll be led off by Mr. Brian Torgerson, Deputy Public Works Director, and this is the budget for 10 minutes.
I hope it's been done sooner than that. It's pretty straightforward, so. Thank you all. While this is pulling up, just wanted to recognize a couple of people in the room, Steve Gleason and our airport manager back there for any of the hard questions, and then Jimmy also. Thank you both of them. If you haven't been around the airport, things are really happening down there. It's really exciting. I guess it just speaks to the point that we're not, we're not pulling, what am I trying to say here? We're not pulling growth, we're not trying to bring growth that's happening, and we're worksite and drop down. So just go ahead real quick. So what we're asking is a $60,000 appropriation to cover overruns in the airport operating budget. Majority of this is overtime for our staff. Other things, we've done a number of property appraisals, which cover a $3,000 price tag, so again, just all related to growth at the airport. Our revenues at the airport are healthy, they look really good, much more than what we had budgeted, so that's what we're proposing to cover this, this appropriation. Parking's killing it right now. We're bursting at the seams with the parking facilities that we have, especially on the weekends. Four flights a day on Sundays, which, all of that's going to overtime. So if there are any questions that the council might have related to this, we'll page.
Tell us about the revenues, Steve. We got those hangers faster, taking care of it faster than we thought we would, didn't we? I mean, we did.
We haven't got all the checks yet, but that's just them waiting for me to get them leases, so it's property descriptions. So as soon as they all give me their property description from the hangar pads, then we write a lease, and they give me a check, but within a couple of weeks, we should have most of those paid for, and there'll be one still outstanding, and then that taxing that will be completely paid for. Biggest government increase we've had so far, though, is parking, as Brian said. We don't have enough parking spaces. Thought we did, thought we were okay, but on weekends, when every single flight applies, well, we have four flights a day, some of them at night, we're having to cover those flights. I've covered as many as I can, but sometimes I can't, so the guys have to come in, stay till nine, 10, 1:00 at night. So we've had quite a few 14-hour days down there, trying to cover it, and that's where our overtime is.
And big shout out to Steve. This all works down there because of Steve and his willingness to take those night flights. As a salary employee, he doesn't get the benefit of the overtime, but thanks to Steve.
That's why I take them, but whenever I ask the guys to do overtime, they, I mean, a 14-hour day, they'll go without that, and so that's why we're overtime.
I assume we've taken a look at increasing staff, that at some point, it makes sense, both financially as well as? Yeah, so in the new budget, we have added one full-time employee, which will help to some extent, at least on the badging side, which is part of that overtime expense. Can't leave Susan out of the mix. She has worked tirelessly on a new badging system, spent a lot of hours, and we've got a new full-time position to actually take the administrative assistant duties off her and let her focus on badging, which is a full-time position, so, but yes.
Susan rebuilt the badging system this fiscal year, so that's a pretty big expense, and she's doing a job of 1,200 badges, but most airports have at least two employees per 300 badges. And we have one employee, 1,200 badges. So yes, we need to add staff. We need to add about four more people. As soon as we have some revenue to cover that, so, until then, we're going to be working 14-hour days, so.
We got a weird thing going, and I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you do, and would you do me a favor and thank your family?
Yeah.
Because I do think that, I mean, when you're putting in 14 hours a day, they are sacrificing.
Not every day.
Days, but would you, would you thank them from, from me?
I will. My wife will appreciate that greatly, she's getting kind of tired of it, so.
And I think, she's making a sacrifice for our city, too, and I'm grateful for that. Thanks for that.
Actually, if you know Steve very well, we're probably helping Linda out.
Yeah.
No, totally echo your comments, Gary. Thank you. It is a big sacrifice on Steve's family, so. Okay, we'll see you in the regular meeting tonight.
Item four is a discussion on the creation of Community Neighborhood Services and Development Services. I believe this will be presented by Mr. Wayne Parker, Chief Administrative Officer. Budgeted 30 minutes.
Oh, we won't take another one, Mr. Chairman. So we've presented now, I think, three times to the council, twice in work meeting and one in the general session, about the changes to the city organization. So Brian Jones and I have worked on Exhibit A, which you have in your materials, that goes through the proposed changes to the administrative code. So let me just, I'll quickly run through those, but Brian and I spent some good hours the last couple of weeks trying to nail this down, so if you're on Exhibit A, if we can start with, let's go down to, make sure I got the right spot. So if you go down to line 120, so that section right there, so lines 120 through 146 are the Mayor's Office of Economic Development and the Redevelopment Agency. Now, the agency actually has its own section of the code that goes through most of the definitions. This is really the structural changes, and so what we did essentially was take out sections 2.10, 2.120, and 2.10 and 30, and then we revised them and reenacted them later in Title II, so those changes are just, for the moment, just eliminating those. And then if we go down to 266, this is where the next substantial change occurs. So here's where we changed the Department of Community Development to the Department of Community and Neighborhood Services. So some of this is just nomenclature change, some of this is a little more substantive, so because we're dividing planning into two different department functions, one for current planning and one for long-range planning, we're having to make some changes to the planning section. So we have plugged in in item two, under, so this will be in line 276, we've taken out some of the planning language, we put it back in later under long-range planning, and then we've just substituted in some of the language related to moving the CDVG and home staff out of the Redevelopment Agency and putting it to the new Community Neighborhood Services Department. And then we add in three things which were not explicitly in Title II, but have been, have developed over the years, which is code enforcement, and again, we'll see some changes to that a little bit later, the ombudsman of property management functions, and the administration of parking programs, parking infrastructure, and neighborhood parking permit programs. So as you know, parking enforcement still stays in customer service as a result of these changes. So now if we go down to, let's go to line 318, 317, 318, we just, we essentially just changed the, to add that code enforcement is now within the Department of Community Neighborhood Services. We changed, Brian and I chatted about this, we changed in two instances the words citations to notices of violation, which is really what we do in code enforcement efforts. We don't really issue citations, we issue notices of violation, so we thought we would change, change that while we were at it. And then starting on line 356, we now implement all the new language relative to the Department of Community Neighborhoods, or, I'm sorry, Department of Development Services. So we have kind of a general statement on lines 358 to 364, which talk about the principal processes that belong to the Department of Development Services. And then we've taken the Economic Development Division, which used to be the Mayor's Office of Economic Development, and just moved the functions there. The Redevelopment Agency staff, we have moved into this area, and again, we referred earlier to moving the CDVG and home staff, federal funding staff, over to Community Neighborhood Services. And then we've moved inspections, and again, they have their own chapter in Title II, but we just reference here that inspections will be part of the Development Services. Then we've added the Current Planning Division, which really deals with the implementations, implementation of city plans associated with development review. And then on, if we go down to lines 400 and beyond, again, all we've done here in the Building Inspection Division is just changed the reporting requirements from Community Development to the Department of Development Services. So that's basically all the changes in Title II that are necessary. Brian and I agreed we would work together over the coming months to go through all of Title 14 and 15 and make similar changes. We're not quite there yet, but these would be the ones that would be necessary really to effectuate the organizational changes that we discussed. So this combined with the budget, which is scheduled for adoption tonight, would be all we need to do to make these organizational changes. So again, trying to be fairly simple and straightforward, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Implementation of those changes, what's the timing of that?
So we'll be, to you, the first meeting in July. We just didn't want to break your standard protocol by trying to do two things in the same evening unless there was an emergency. I think we're fine. We're recruiting currently for the Development Services Director position. We'll be easily second week in July before we're at a point where we're ready to make an offer to someone, so I think the timing works fine for us to just, so we'll come back in the action agenda in the regular council meeting on the 9th of July.
Wait, so you go back through, line 360 has a duplication of phrases.
Okay.
Imagine tax or community projects twice.
Okay, yep, okay, we'll fix that. Excellent, we'll see you then. Skip Brian and I both, so. Good on you, Cliff. Anything else?
Let me just say, I'm thrilled that we're moving forward with this. I'm very hopeful. I got an earful from a neighbor just a couple days ago, and I'm something I think that this will help, at least bring more clarity and, you know, easier for our residents to kind of know where to go for answers and.
Yep.
I'm thrilled about it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I don't know if we need a motion to move it to the night, or leadership just wants to settle, but I don't think it's programmed yet for the council, so. Yep.
At least bring more clarity and, you know, easier for our residents to kind of know where to go for answers and.
Yep.
I'm thrilled about it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I don't know if we need a motion to move it to the night, or leadership just wants to set it, but I don't think it's programmed yet for council, so.
I don't think we're fine unless you want to make a change to something.
Yeah, so we'll see this get on the night.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Item five is a discussion regarding the parking requirements and transportation demand management for plans for multi-family developments. I will be presenting this, and I was hoping that Mr. Pepperoni would be here as well for some of the discussion, but all right, I'll lead out on this. Yeah, we're just, we're well ahead of where we possibly, that's good.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so.
If we got a couple of minutes, Wayne, I'm, can I go back to the last item for a minute?
Yeah.
If we got a couple of minutes, can you tell me how engineering, how are these all going to, I've had a lot of complaints around engineering in the last little while. How is this, is our new system going to actually improve those situations?
Yep.
Can you help me understand that and help, so I can explain it to residents?
Sure. So we're doing a number of things to try to make the process a little more streamlined and intuitive. So Dave Decker and I just chatted this morning. So Public Works has their version of the CRC on Monday afternoons, and so he and I downloaded a couple of projects this morning. And one of the things we have frequently done in the past, which has caused a lot of consternation with developers and engineers, is we've issued sort of these incessant comments that have been sort of iterative over time. And we expect the finals, have historically expected the final submission to be 100% there when, before engineering gives their approval. So one of the things we've started doing the last couple of weeks has been to essentially have Public Works approve with conditions. So in other words, they can mark up the project plan and approve it, and then when the developer does their final submission, they have everything in writing on the plans, as opposed to having all these comments that are sort of separated and distinct from the plans. And so Public Works CRC did three projects like that yesterday and got them cleared out weeks ahead of when they would normally have been cleared out and ready to go. And we are having a final meeting tomorrow morning on the East Bay subdivision, which is the old jail property, and we expect to get final approval on that one tomorrow morning through CRC. So again, so that's sort of one element to it. The other thing is that we are, we've now established a standard of all city departments getting essentially two, what we've called two bites at the apple, or two review processes. And at the end of two reviews, we'll make all of our final comments, and if the developer comes back and meets all of those comments, the project will be finished. They won't get another shot at making changes, as long as the changes have been entirely reflective of what were in the comments. We've looked at a couple of projects. We've actually had four review processes. We've gone and made corrections to those now. And so every CRC meeting, anything that's had two reviews or more gets raised in CRC, and the question is asked, where are we? What's being done? If it's in the developer's court, then we'll make a phone call and make sure the developer knows it's in his court. If we believe it's in our court, then there's no excuse to not having a final answer. So CRCs have been longer in the last month or six weeks since we've tried to implement some of these changes. But the good news is we're getting developers in, reviewing all the final comments with them. Many times, we can get resolution right in the CRC meeting and get agreement, and give final approval to the project plan. So I think we're seeing some good changes already. We've reduced the size of the CRC, so we have a core group of about six now, and it used to be 20 or plus employees attending the CRC meeting. So we're a little more nimble, able to make final decisions on the fly rather than having to send things back for, you know, multiple iterations through the same process, so.
You feel six is enough eyes on the project, you're still getting.
Yeah, so we'll invite others to come based on the project when it's reviewed on the agenda, and so, but they may only come in for one project review and then leave. And so we're not spending an awful lot of time and getting people to review projects that really aren't in their portfolio. Yeah, I'm confident that we're doing as good a job or better, and we're certainly doing it more timely and more transparently.
That's awesome.
Not all the way there yet. We've got some other changes we need to make along the way, but I think we've seen some pretty substantial changes already. And please don't hesitate. If anybody calls you with a concern or a question, let, send them to me. I'm happy to meet with them. We can invite them to a CRC meeting. I'm meeting with a developer tomorrow morning that's got some concerns about one of these sewer capacity issues that we'll continue to confront, as you know, over the next several years. But we are, again, we're trying to provide an avenue for people to get directly to the CRC meeting or to me in advance of the CRC meeting, so we can make sure we're asking all the right questions.
And then the training that's going to happen after that for the people, you've got some.
Yep.
Line up for that.
Yeah, we are. The portal is now up and operating. We'll be doing a public outreach next week on the portal, but we've already got BYU's now submitting all of their plans online through the portal. Most of our sort of regular developers, folks we typically work with, are now doing all of their interactions in terms of submission, tracking, processes, responding to comments, submitting revised plans, all happening online now. So again, I think it's, it seems to be working well. There are a few bugs yet to finish, but it's in substantial enough shape that we've now opened the door to anyone who wants to come in and register and usually on our portal.
And my only, you know, my experience, I haven't had a lot, but we, as we came, we were working on a little project, and I was getting, did you feel, Kay, that we were getting a few conflicting answers to certain questions? Maybe I wasn't answering the questions appropriately, but the training was there so that each person.
I liked that better. I didn't get, that was just a situation.
It was just an.
My other experience is better.
Okay, and that's good. I just want that training so that we're not getting two different answers from a couple of different.
See, we weren't on the portal. We were.
We weren't doing it on the portal.
So we're switching all over.
But again, let us, let us help walk through any of those issues that we have. We're happy to take those on and try to get a resolution.
And going through the portal, once you hit the portal, that's pretty obvious what we need to do. It became more very obvious.
Yeah, it's proved very much, you're right. Okay, thanks. Thanks for asking.
Thank you for putting us in on that. All right, so back to item number five. We met as an executive or as the housing committee, just the members on the council that committee and staff and discuss parking. Specifically, we have in the code some provisions that parking standards can be reduced in certain circumstances, but in there explicitly that we can't do that for residential, just commercial and industrial. And we've all been always a little bit aware of the development that's been proposed, South Stage Street. It was naturally occurring, affordable housing, so it's not being subsidized, but it should be at a price point that's affordable to median income individuals. And there was some argument that they had built this in other places, and our parking standards were excessive, more than what had been shown to be needed in similar projects. And so the request was, you know, can we adjust those? And I think the decision was to go with the P R O zone, so it could be said specifically. But we kind of came back around to the question of, you know, are there instances when someone's going to build affordable housing? Are we willing to look at our parking ratios and things like that? And I think the committee had some heartburn because it seems like, I feel, in my words, it feels like a pendulum, where someone will come in and make a convincing case about, well, you know, we can get by with less, and so we go ahead and improve it. And then some of the times, those things don't turn out so well. We get a lot of pushback, and so we then increase the ratios, and then sometimes it's the very next one that comes in, oh, well, we'd like to do it, but with, you know, a smaller ratio and, you know, whether or not, it just, it seems like we're, we could be all over the place as far as parking. And so we were saying, well, this seems to make sense, and it seems like, you know, if we're worried about housing affordability, it seems silly to require more parking than maybe necessary, but we also want to learn from our mistakes and not repeat some of our mistakes. One of the suggestions was to look at transportation demand management. We've asked to look at this with downtown parking, and that's where there's a whole laundry list of design elements and programs that can be built into these projects that have been shown to reduce the need for parking. And Bill Pepperoni suggested that he's seen some remarkable impacts, people that have embraced this and some of the other projects. You reduce parking stalls or two, and with that space, with that money, we're able to put in several amenities that reduce the need for parking, if you're right. And so rather than just reducing the rates, he suggested if we're interested in looking at this, that we look at the transportation demand management as a way, so it's not just a, oh, well, we believe you or we don't believe you, and we'll change these ratios, these parking requirements, but if you will do these things, then you can qualify for a reduction. So that was my introduction. Mr. Mills, is there, did you have a presentation or?
I don't have a presentation. I was asked by Mr. Pepperoni to kind of work on drafting some initial and preliminary legislation, and it basically deals with what Mr. Harding has just said. One specific thing that we wanted to incorporate into this is currently applicants, the mechanism that applicants can use is a conditional use permit that they can apply for through the planning commission. We, our suggestion and recommendation is to make that part of the project plan approval. A conditional use permit generally denotes that it's a given approval. We have to make some very, very clear, concise findings of why it would be hazardous to not grant an approval. So if we change the language in there to make it part of, make a parking reduction part of the project plan, then that gives us the ability to be a little bit more robust in the requirements that we put on it, that conditions on which will allow those types of things. So if you would recommend, the planning commission will allow them. So that's kind of a change that would give real benefit of this legislation.
I've got a question about this. I just Sunday celebrated my 41st wedding anniversary, and as soon as I was married, Mayor Jenkins called me in and said, would you mind sitting on the committee to talk about how we can do, reduce parking requirements? Forty-one years ago. Where are we, whatever came of that thing, and are we, are we keep, we keep talking about these types of things, and we've got a few things in code, but I feel like, Dave, as we're swinging back and forth and back and forth, and is that part of the change that happens within a community because of mass transportation and because of whatever else that comes into the community, higher density, is there all those things? Is this just going to be an ongoing process forever and ever to deal with this type of parking issues? So the pendulum's going, I don't see an answer to the pendulum because of the change in the community. I don't think we can decide something today.
Until we go to driverless cars and then.
Yeah, and we start doing that, and I just wonder where we get to the point that we think we've come up with the right answer. Is there a right answer? Because the world changes so much, and the pendulum will go back and forth. So I appreciate what you're talking about now, and I think it's important for us to recognize that we look at it, what is it, right now, rather than we expect in 20 years.
So I'd like to take a stab at it. And I apologize, okay? I probably wasn't clear in my introduction. There, it feels like that we've grappled with what is the right balance, where is the right answer for the parking ratio, parking requirements, parking requirements? And it's a complicated question because it's site-specific, and it changes over time. It is a moving target. And so what has often happened is we have set a minimum that's required, and then someone will come in and will make a case, well, I don't want to do all of that. I think I can get away with this. And so we've just been moving that one number of, well, we're going to require 2.25, or we're going to require 1.75, and so, you know, we kind of move it back and forth, and that's kind of what I felt like, it's kind of gone up and down. We have a bad experience, and we crank it up, and then a developer comes in and says, I can't do that. You know, if you want this development, you've got to bring it back down, so we bring it down. And so this is a way of saying, here's the requirement, it's still there, but if you're willing to implement some of these other, these other amenities and other design elements, then you can qualify for reductions. So it's not just, we're not just moving the dial, we're also, we're requiring some.
Some things coming out, and that's exactly what we're talking about. It was lighting, it was landscaping, oh, if you put the landscaping in, then we'll give you reductions. We'll give you, were we basing it on a point system? I can't remember. It's been that long ago that if you get so many points, you can have fewer parking stalls. And it seems like we just, we do go over this all over again. And I think that this is something that actually might be healthy for the community to keep reviewing this, rather than saying, okay, we finally got the right answer. Because I don't know if there is a right answer.
So I sent you my draft, and Hannah's already read it. I wrote up kind of an analysis of what's going on in the walking neighborhood, and it talks about this decades. It's gone on since, you know, the 50s or 60s. It was 1967 when the students came and complained that there's not enough off-street parking. So it's, it is an ongoing thing, and we have had different standards over the years, but prior, somewhere, I don't know when it started, but prior to 1967, and to this day, there has always been the caveat that regardless of what standard you are approved under, you will have either that minimum number or no less than the number of parking spaces required for the cars owned and operated at that property, and it's the property owner that's responsible for providing that parking and/or renting to people that do or don't have cars to match up the available parking. And this has all been short-circuited by the fact that we provide free overflow on-street parking. If we didn't have that, if everyone was just stuck with whatever they had off-street on their property, we wouldn't even need a parking standard. When someone came in, they'd go, well, gee, if I want so many customers and I expect them to have so many cars, I better have so many spaces because I can't rely on parking in the next neighborhood, or down the street, or wherever it is. So we'll talk more about this, but the flexibility of having somebody come in and saying, we have a plan, we're going to address or include different elements that will, in their, they have to convince us that there's going to be less of a need for the parking so that the ratio can be reduced.
So this was, the intent of this.
So um, so this was, the intent of this item was just to get a feel from the council um before we go too far in the process. I believe if, if the council's supportive generally of this, um then Mr. Mills will finish his, his drafting, submit it to the planning commission, um and then it'll come up through the, those channels and we'll see it in his final, um proposals.
Now, I think it was supposed to actually be sponsored by the housing committee or the, or the.
Yes.
Yeah, so it'll.
I'm drafting under their direction.
Yeah, so it'll get reviewed in committee.
Okay, so it'll come back to our committee and then once that's, and then it'll go through the planning commission.
So are you implementing the requirements and the, the opportunities to lower the parking ratios? Are you saying if you will do this, this and this, you can reduce your parking? Those are the things that you're going to be coming up with, is that correct?
Uh, to look base, like, the, I think the anticipation is that applicants will be able to apply to reduce their parking, um but there will be a base level of minimum required parking.
And we already kind of have that in the DT-1 zone, don't we, in certain areas of the city?
And we're gonna remodel after that, but it will be available now outside of DT-1. That, that's, that's the initial thoughts by public committee.
Is the basic spirit is to incentivize non-automobile transportation except the, or there are other dimensions?
It's broader than that, but, but yes, um obviously if, um, you know, places are built close to transit nodes and it's designed in such a way to encourage people to do that, make it easy, simple, um, you know, if you have to haul a bicycle up three flights of stairs and navigate through your apartment and, and stuff that, you know, sticking out on your, your balcony, you're less likely to ride every day. Whereas if there's nice covered parking, it's very convenient, um it, it can encourage people. So those type of things, but that it's, it's broader, it's um, you know, any, anything that can be, I shouldn't say anything, but, but there are, there are many ways that um the need for parking can be reduced and this will give, give us options. Um, let's see, so notes here, this will come through future counseling, but I, I think, yeah, it'll come back to the committee first and then the planning commission. So I don't, that's, it can be a, a motion, but are there any, any concerns or objections continuing on this proposed path? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward with that. Thank you, Mr. Mills, and thank you, Mr. Pepperoni. Uh, all right. Item six is a discussion on a proposed ordinance amendment to the Propensity Code, Chapter 9, 17, Civil Infractions Parking Violations.
Yes. We're ready to have a schedule potentially. Do you want to break?
Um, yeah, I mean.
My question is, is Laramie waiting for anybody else to be here?
Um, if we could get to 10, if we can get through 10 and we're still ahead of time, we're, we're not 40 minutes behind, then we can take much of a break. If, if that's okay, I mean, if people really need one, we can take a foot break. But I'd like to, but shit, I'm just, I'm really nervous about that.
Okay. Thank you for listening, chief. All right, so, Mr. Gonzalez, and this is budgeted for 20 minutes.
Good afternoon. Um, there are two things before you again, um our parking enforcement structure change. Um, I think I've presented to you a couple of times in the last couple of months, so I'm trying to breeze over some of the, some of the high-level stuff that, you know, our basic operations and that type of thing. And kind of get to just remind you of what we're actually proposing here. Um, again, this is our parking operations. Why, uh, why we're proposing a new fee structure? Um, again, we have a new law that was passed in 2018 that takes effect July 1st. Um, we had some parking enforcement operations growth for the last few years and coming up, um parking needs. Um, that we have a strategic more parking management plan and um our code has just not been modified for, for 10 years and the parking rates are longer than that, so we're just looking to try to kill a couple birds of a hornstone here. Reminder again, the House bill that passed that takes effect July 1st uh does not allow for late fees to total more than 25% of the original fee, which makes our current um parking fee structure non-compliant. And I gave you a little snippet of the um deck full of House bill itself, but. So we're gonna try to modify our current fee structure to be in line with the House bill. Um, because right now, our current code says that after they're late, it doubles and then after 20 days it triples. So that's obviously one of the 25%.
Um, Larry, can I ask you a question on that one?
Sure.
Is that, is that for only individual parking? They could end up with several parking. Each one's individually, right? And so if it doubles, and we can't do that anymore, but 25% of each one is the maximum that we can get. But we could get 10 parking citations for one person.
Correct. So we feel that 25% really isn't a whole lot of a ding to get people to, to pay, but that's the law. So we're gonna try to work within that. And outside of growth, the other big one here is the needs that we've identified to sustain the current parking enforcement effort um over the next five years is going to require about a 25% increase in the revenue generated per year to cover those costs. And I'll get into those in just a second. Um, the goals here, we need to eliminate the old late fee assessment of the double and triple. Um, the new fee and the, the language in the new amended code allows for a discount to pay early or pay on time and to basically eliminate the, the, the old structure. Um, and obviously to create a 25% increase in the revenue to try to, to, to get to where we need to be. So give you some basic information on how we got, got to where we needed to be with the new fee. Um, the majority of all of our citations for parking enforcement are $30. 60% of all of our fees now are $30. Um, 30% of those fees that we collect, the fines that we collect are $25 and 10% are other. Um, 30% of the past due violations currently um are, are late and pay double the fee. Uh, 5% of that $30 will pay triple the fee. So by the time we calculate that revenue and those potential late payers, that'll just get to where we think the new, uh, the new fine needs to be. Um, and of course, we want to be comparable to other cities and make sure we're not doing something out of the ordinary and even compared to BYU, which is about $60 for their average fee. So our new fee proposal is the average fee would go from 30 to $55. Um, last time we presented it, we had a couple of different scenarios that kind of left some, some odd discount amounts, which um the comments that we took back was if we just rounded that to an even $15 discount, it makes it 40 if they, if they pay early. Um, and this scenario here should notice about a 25 to 30% increase in annual revenue.
Can I, I got another crazy question here. I feel like I'm Comcast when they come in and say, well, this is our charge, but if you call me, we'll, we'll drop it down to here. And is our, and really, that's their charge, you know, if you call them, that's really their charge. Is our charge really $40 and we, can we justify to the state that it is 50? Um, our, our fee is really $55? How do they feel about that? And they say, well, you're, most people are doing $40.
Um, so we have changed the way we presented it and the way it's written in the code that before.
Hannah's probably just gonna have to change.
Okay, so just hit this forward there to advance this slide.
This one's good. So previously, the way the code read was within five days was our normal, was our normal fee. And it was, it was $25 and then after 11 days it went to 50, it's when it doubled, and then it went to 75. And rather than have them all broke out that way where you see multiple iterations of the same fee, the new uh, the way the code reads going forward is we categorized, kind of shrunk all those individual fees and put them into one fee and presented them as just being paid on time as $55. And there's a section in the code that allows for that discount and, and it allows for a discount for other things um that gives our parking people the discretion to give a discount for first-time offenses and, you know, things like that. But um we decided just to present it as $55 because that truly is what the fee, that's what the fee is. So we didn't want to do a, um, I think last time I presented it, I showed it that it was $55, but if you qualify for the discount, it would be 40 and I didn't want to try to sell a $40 fee when in fact the code says it's $55. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. It feels a little uncomfortable to me, but I, I think that makes sense, though. I, I just, I don't like the idea of, because I know what the real, you know, my 55, if you can justify 55, I'm comfortable.
Right. And we base, we base it on just that, that it is 55 and that we do realize that a percentage of those are gonna pay early and do want that discount. Um, but in general, somebody asks what the parking fee is, it's $55.
So if I were to get a $55 fee and pay it on day 12, what would I pay?
Okay, you discovered that earlier today.
All right.
Um, this, this should say 11 or more days. So before, it was five days, within five days it was a regular amount, and up to 11 days, it was considered late. We've changed that to be up to 10 days. Now you have a 10-day window to pay on time. Um, an internal policy could be within five days is when we would give, they would qualify for that $15 discount. But in general, the fee is just 55. So they have within 10 days to pay without it being considered late. And then on day 11, so I should say 11, that's when it becomes late with the 25% and late fee.
So one, one question I have is I'm just trying to compare this to typical business terms and you might get a 2% discount for paying an invoice in 10 days instead of 30 days. This just seems like a massive discount to pay five days earlier. I'm just curious what the.
I think the goal was, was by increasing the fee and following the, the new law, 25% to the, of the late fee wasn't much incentive for most to pay the, the fine previously when we doubled and tripled. That seemed to get people in the door and pay on time because that's a huge ding. But without that incentive to pay, we tried to create a built-in incentive that, that, oh, if you pay early, you pay on time, then there's some benefit to getting in the door, rather than trying to give them benefit upfront, rather than giving them a heavy ding on the, the backend, which we're no longer allowed to do.
So the effect is the same, whether you structure it as a penalty or as incentives, one by the door?
Right.
And I do like the idea of getting them in the door, getting it off the books and moving on, rather than having it kind of linger for some period of time, it becomes frustrating.
I think too, it also helps, Sandy, who's just here with us today, she's um our parking enforcement manager and she's the one that reviews those as they come in the door and I think it would help when she has the, the leeway to offer those discounts and make it a better experience rather than have to review that after it's already late and realize that it's a, they're getting a double and a triple sting.
How will we let people know about the potential discount if they pay within five days? Will that be on the parking ticket?
That's a possibility.
Maybe just the penalty side on the parking ticket?
If I remember right.
Not that you have any experience with that.
You're asking for a friend, right? Um, I'm not sure, Sandy, is that currently on the ticket?
It's not currently, but it is something that's just put it on the ticket.
It's by trouble if you don't put it on the ticket.
But the current, um, the current citation amount is on the ticket?
Your current citation, I guess, is on the ticket and it also says that it's made double or triple.
So just you can change that message. And also in the, Hannah, can you pull up that actual amended code? Can you go through really quickly what, what changes we made there? It's also in the code, um, that does say that they can qualify for that $15 discount if they pay, they pay on time or pay early or not. So just keep scrolling. These are the changes we actually made to the code. One thing that we changed up above was um parking enforcement is now under customer service rather than finance, so that was one, one thing that we changed. Um, really, the main things we changed here was previously every parking violation was, was identified individually plus the, the fine. So overtime parking, it's a 25. The next one, um, parking with intersection, then it's a fine. And so it listed every one of those individually. We've, in the, in the amended version, we've listed them all individually and then we didn't put what the fine was. We just put in the table, all of the fines in this subsection are now $55. So to try to clean that up a little bit, just scroll down. Um, keep going. Right here, oh, go so then, right here is where we added in this provision where they can, they can qualify for that discount at $15 if it's paid within five business days. Um, and then that's where the language changed from where we doubled and tripled to the 25%. And then we added another provision in here that any of these fees can be discounted at the discretion of the department director or the parking enforcement manager or their representative to give them a little bit of leeway and not tie their hands for things such as a first-time violation or things like that. Or we didn't want to spell those out individually because then we felt that if we spelled them out individually and listed those, then we were kind of just stuck to those particular instances when we could actually waive or give a discount, so. You have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. Fees, if I remember right, have to be justified, is that correct? That they are not arbitrary. And this $15, can we justify that $15?
It's not a fee, it's a discount.
It's a discount, but is that?
You can't charge more in the fee than is justified. You can always charge less, you can charge no fee. Uh, the state statute just says that the maximum amount you can charge is to cover your regulatory costs. And the $55 covers our regulatory costs.
Okay, and then we can discount it and charge, okay, that makes sense. I just didn't want to.
Where do we come up with $15 as well as one?
If we had to discount, if we don't, that's great.
So I'm, I'm still struggling with this structure a little bit here. Maybe we could contrast it. Um, what if, what if you just have two fees and you, you set the on-time fee for an amount that would be roughly equivalent, I don't know what it would be, let's say it's $50, so it's just $50 if you're on time and you have a 25% late fee if you're not on time. What, and what's the advantage of this more complex structure as compared to that? So I, I just worry that we're kind of leaving people pretty heavily if they missed that five-day window. I mean, if they're one day, you know, they don't have the early discount.
So the first time I presented, I think it was Brian that had the comment that, and we talked with Steve Schreiner and he's got a legal opinion there, that the intent of the House bill was to. that the intent of the House bill was to eliminate those heavy fines, the heavy double and the triple. So, our approach was, and similar to many other cities, they were going to give a substantial discount to make sure that they still kept their parking fees low, but was able to offer that incentive. But I think the concern there is, is by giving a, an advertised discount of this is what you're actually gonna pay if you pay on time, which I guess it's also meant to be you paid on time or you paid within a certain window. The concern was now we're trying to get around what the original intent of the House bill was set to do. We didn't want to advertise it. If you come in and pay on time during these, this timeframe, then it's this amount because that seemed to defeat the purpose of...
Right, and that, and that kind of gets to what I think my concern is because it, it still feels like we're trying to get around the, the state law a little bit to me because you can look at the difference between the forty and the sixty-eight, seventy-five. That's a lot more than twenty-five percent. So, I'm just trying to understand what's, what's the advantage versus giving you a number that if you're on time, this is what you pay, if you're not on time, you pay twenty-five percent more than that. What benefit does this give you versus that kind of a simpler approach?
The only concern was for us mainly was rather than break that down, showing the discount, but if we just left it at fifty-five and just said that is our, that is the, the fee, then we would have the leeway to give a discount. I think when we first proposed it, we had told everyone here that we was going to offer that fifteen-dollar discount. Everybody liked the idea of the fact that we're keeping our parking fees low. So, as we got talking from a legal perspective, we thought, oh, maybe we should take the fifteen dollars out because that could be somewhat confusing, like you said, it seems like we're getting around that. But then I felt like by taking that fifteen dollars out and I just said, okay, now it's fifty-five. I know I told you they could get a discount, but we're not gonna do that anymore. Felt like that was a little bit of a bait and switch. So, we left the identified discount of fifteen dollars in there. But we, we could do it either way. We could take the identified fifteen dollars out and just say it could be discounted. But welcome suggestion, I suppose.
So, our current fees are not fifty-five, what are they?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five and thirty.
Yeah, twenty-five and thirty. So, if we stuck with a fifty or fifty-five, then we are really ripping people off. I mean, I don't know how you can justify going from twenty-five to thirty to fifty, fifty-five. And that, and so by offering a discount to what is the justifiable full rate, kind of like impact fees, what's the justifiable full amount? Well, you could say we never really were charging people the full amount because you have to kind of weigh that with what's socially acceptable. And now, if we offer this opportunity to say, hey, come in immediately, and it's really about the same as you used to pay, but if you don't, then you're gonna pay the full price. And then, if you really are late, the state allows us to charge you twenty-five percent more than the full price.
Yeah, the, the way you described it though, again, it, it feels to me like we're trying to get around having the twenty-five percent difference because the way you described it, you're saying like, you know, we're hoping that most people will, will pay within five days and pay early, and that's sort of like the real rate, if you know what you're doing. But if you're not sharp enough or didn't notice that you've got to pay within five days, then you're gonna...
Well, it should be right, we should put that right on the bill or...
Well, that's, yeah, we don't, I think that, that creates that problem. But if it's right there on the bill, at least, I don't know, I can see the argument that it, it helps, it helps people to pay on time or...
It helps create that incentive that currently we'll be missing if we don't.
And I actually do like the separation of an earlier payment versus a, otherwise they'll just say, oh, if it's close to the on-time payment, I don't pay it, it's no big deal, I'll just pay the bigger amount. Look, it's not that big a difference. But if you can get a big difference, then let's get it cleaned up. Let's just get it done and get it out of the way. That's kind of the way I think. I'd like to get those fees taken care of.
Did you say earlier that the state code allows for discounts?
It doesn't mention anything.
Okay, the state code does not mention allowance and discounts. It just says that payments can be a little bit different. But we, we can give a discount of a hundred percent when you say we're not gonna charge you because it's the first offense or whatever else.
Okay.
I thought your...
The question is overall revenue has to...
Right.
Have to meet needs, right?
And then, I guess this is a little bit to what Mr. Parker said about the fees can cover the regulatory efforts or whatever. So, we're not talking about what is the cost of, of the service of you getting a ticket, of giving you a ticket. The service is parking enforcement. And so, you can cover, you can charge fees to cover the cost of enforcing our parking requirements. And so, I, I thought you had mentioned earlier that, that the code allows for a discount. And I guess you were talking about the city code, not the state code. I, I do still feel like it's, it's one thing for a city to say, okay, our, our parking ticket is, is fifty dollars, and the public can judge that and say, well, you know, maybe clamor if they feel that's unjustified. But if it's fifty-five, but oh, you know, it could end up being a hundred and fifty because of this doubling and tripling versus, you know, it's, it's fifty dollars, it can only go up twenty-five, you know, but there is a, a discount available. To me, you know, what is the cost of that parking ticket? It's fifty, it's fifty dollars even though there is this discount available. So, I, I think it's, it's a bit in just what we advertise, kind of truth and, truth in advertising. Fifty dollars is what it is. There's a discount and a, and a late fee, but it's not absorbed in. So, I know that's, that's how I'm looking at it.
So, there is another caveat here. I mean, I kind of understand your partner, although I don't share that partner. But when someone gets a ticket, not the latter we got here.
Only K's got it.
You, there are different scenarios. And one of them is if you, at least in the past, chose to go to traffic school, then it wouldn't show up on your record.
Not on his parking, is it?
No.
It's moving violations. Moving violations.
Moving violations, yeah. But I'm just saying, you know, you get these tickets for different things with your car and whether it's parking or a moving violation, and it's like, hey, so, this is what it is. But then we have a program so that you don't have to face that penalty of having it show up on your insurance and then your rates go up forever. So, we offer something. And it ends up giving you a discount on your insurance rates because you go through our program. You take our option. And so, I think having an option of paying it early, it's like, I don't know, some people just say, you can pay me in cash and I'll give you a four percent discount. I mean, it's just business.
So, we are over time on this, and so far, we'll have another comment. But perhaps we will be asked to vote on this this evening. So, if there's anything else that you feel, any additional information that you'd like to see or if something, we could finish on that now and perhaps you can see that might be needed.
Just, my, my preference would be to just have a two-rate structure. I think it's, it's simpler. I don't know what to make around doing mutual. I don't know what the number would be. It would be fifty instead of fifty-five or whatever. But again, I think maybe it's just from my experience in business, but normally the reason we do offer a discount is for cash flow reasons. I mean, I have a thirty or a two percent ten, you know, two percent discount for paying ten days instead of thirty. And so, that, that discount has some relationship to the value of getting your money more quickly. But to have like a, I don't know what this is, a twenty percent or fifteen percent or whatever discount to only get the money five days sooner, it just, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, what, what, what does that do for us that you, does it cost us money to wait ten days?
It would cost us a teeny-tiny fraction of the, the difference in the two rates.
I think it might cost more than that, David, because then we start adding things on. We had one ticket, ah, it's not that much, so I'll just wait till I get my next ticket or my next ticket. And all those tickets, I've heard people coming in here with ten tickets. And if they would have had the discount applied in the early part, they wouldn't have had to get ten tickets. They would have gotten it, gotten them each cleaned up each time, potentially. I, I just...
I think sometimes just having the incentive gets them in the door to pay initially. There are those people that aren't gonna pay no matter what you do. Give them a, a discount, we double or triple. We have, I don't know how many, five, seven percent of them go to collections regardless of the incentive that we get. So, I think if we just have the two-rate structure, in my opinion, that takes away our incentive because twenty-five percent of this, of a late fee on a fifty-dollar ticket's only sixty-eight dollars. And that's really not much of an incentive to get those people to, if they don't care, you have to have something that makes them care.
And, and, so, I think the thing that I would look at is, you know, we're talking about the cost of parking enforcement. A part of that is in our collection efforts. And I, and if this is something that helps motivate people to get in and get paid versus, you know, oh, maybe I'll get around to it or, you know, it may end up costing us more to try to collect on those fees than if we put, give an incentive for them to act quickly, you know, before they start, for people forgetting about it or, that's, that's, I think that's where I'm looking at that. Just, it may reduce the overall cost of collection if, if we give that motivation for people to take care of it.
Okay. And I, I understand that, but again, I think the state code has said that the, the maximum discount or incentive that you're supposed to give is twenty-five percent. But we're talking about twenty-five percent on the back end. And then on the front end, we're offering a twenty-seven percent discount favor to pay five days early. So...
Real quick, is the state law allowing a twenty-five percent discount or a penalty?
Well, it allows a penalty and it's silent on the discount issue, but it, it, it feels like just terminology to me because we're, we're essentially offering, well, I've saved my...
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Just letting one, one last thought moving forward. I think there has been a little discomfort, but that's to make sure that we're not violating the spirit of the law or whatever. And this has, the post concerns have been raised up and they're having some changes to try to address that. And at least at the time, I believe our, our own council, our council attorney has kind of signed off on this, I believe, that a lot of our legal requirements also look at it. So, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not discounting your concerns and I think it is something that multiple, multiple people have been thinking about.
Can we bring this up again?
This will come up tonight, yes. Until then, I'll give a little more detail. I kind of skipped over like actually reading the language and what the extra twenty-five percent in revenues covering as far as the LPRs and other expense, I can give a little more of that.
One thing, I don't know if this is feasible or not, but it sounds like there, there's at least some counselors who are interested in what it would look like if it was just two-tiered. I know that's not the recommendation, but it might be helpful to have kind of an alternative sketched out where you can get your twenty-five percent increase, what would the base fee need to be in terms of two-tiered?
I think in your packet that you had the last time, there's like ten scenarios that talk about the different amount and different discounts and not to get to that same number. And then, I think as we talk through it, you know, with the administration prior to bringing it to council, that's kind of... Yeah, if you look through those, that is, well, I can have a, a plan B kind of put down.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm not sure we're gonna be able to review that before tonight, but if you want to come up with that kind of plan B, I don't know, I, I don't know where we'll end up on that, but I might want to do that on that. Okay? Minister, it's done, folks.
All right.
I'm seven, this is a discussion on a whole consortium interlocal agreement. We have Mr. Ken Gonzalez with us, CDBG and Home Administrator, and this budget's ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Good afternoon, everyone. As you are aware, a couple of weeks ago, we presented the, the proposal for funding for both the community development block grant and the home investment sponsorship program. Today, well, to give you a little bit of background, in Utah County, Provo is the only city that qualifies to receive directly funding, funding directly from HUD based on the formula. But the program allows for a formation of a consortium that would allow those other localities in Utah County that do not qualify to receive funding directly to join in a consortium so that the funding doesn't go to the state, but it comes directly to the community. And so, a consortium has been formed since nineteen ninety-one and thereabouts. It's changed a little bit in membership. But the latest membership is Provo City, Oran City, Lehi City, and then Utah County. Utah County qualifies as a, as an urban county because they receive CDBG funding. And so, any locality that joins with the county to receive CDBG automatically benefits from receiving home funds because the county is a member of the consortium. And so, every three years, this agreement needs to be renewed. And HUD requires that we put all that together a year prior to the first year where we would receive funding. So, the agreement that, that we're proposing now is for fiscal years two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. But all membership, all members of the consortium need to agree on that, be in agreement to the, to the document and sign it so we can send all the paperwork to, to HUD by the end of the month. And so, then they can put our consortium in, in play for funding to be allocated for the next three years. So, that in a nutshell is the reason why I'm here. The agreement stipulates as the requirements for the consortium state that an entity assumes the lead entity responsibility, which is basically being the phase before HUD of administering the program and making sure that all the requirements are met. And since the inception of consortium, Provo City has been the lead entity, and that is what is proposed in this agreement as well. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? I have one. Are there any differences, any substantial differences, any substantive differences between the last agreement discovered, you know, the last two years in this coming year and this one? Is it basically just renewing it?
It's, it's the same thing, just, just renewing it. Everything is the same. Yeah.
Why, why are we the lead? If Oran wanted to be the lead or Lehi wanted to be the lead, why are we the lead?
Well, I think...
Is it because you've got such a good department going on or you understand it better than them or...
This is based on what I've heard from history prior to is Provo City has the personnel, personnel and trained personnel to administer the program. None of the other cities, if, if one of the other cities chose to be the lead entity, they would have to have someone that would do it for them. And so, so far, none of them have, have the desire to hire someone or have somebody involved that would lead the consortium. Again, this is all historic, I don't have the actual facts on this. One thing that is, that is true is that HUD provides every year a percentage of how much funding would each member receive. And consistently, even now that the county's part of it, Provo City receives the highest percentage. I don't know that that plays into the reason why Provo City has been the lead entity, possibly. I think it lights more in the fact that none of the other members have someone or have the, the, that prowess to administer the program themselves. And I, I would imagine also, if the consortium was to not be, Provo City still qualifies to receive funding. And so, I would imagine Provo City would still seek to receive that funding where the rest of the localities would have to go to the state to be able to receive any funding.
I assumed that this meant that we had more opportunity to spread the responsibility rather than less. Is that accurate? I mean, in other words, if we're not the lead, we're gonna be in a weaker position to be able to encourage other cities to do their part. Or is that...
I suppose that would be true, yes. I suppose that would be true, yes. Just for your information, the city of Lehi has already approved the agreement. The county has already approved the agreement. Orem City has it on their agenda tonight.
Excellent. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Item eight is the presentation regarding the annexation process. Not any process or not any objection to the overall process. We have this being presented by our own Mr. Cliff Strachan, the municipal prosecutor.
This is going to be a team effort. And Elizabeth's going to bring it, or Hannah's going to bring it up now. Gary McGinn and Gary Millward have done, are going to participate in this as well. Very briefly, we just wanted to give you a review of the annexation process. I'm going to tell you that straight up as we're reviewing it, probably some minor changes will need to be made to city code and to the annexation guide based on legislative changes in the last couple of years at the state level. Provo City Code has five subsections of chapter 15.15. And this is just some highlights of it. Basically, the general requirement of our annexation policies that protects the general interest of the taxpayer and public and the rights of the individual property owners who wish to be annexed into the city. There are two main ways of annexation. One is the property owner initiates and they get to control whether they are annexed in the timing. And then there's a municipal initiation of annexation where the policy of the city is to annex areas that meet all these requirements. They're either an island or within or a peninsula contiguous with the city boundaries. There's a majority residential or commercial development already within it, requires delivery of municipal-type services, and the city's already been providing those for at least a year. I hope that Gary McGinn goes into the procedures a little more, but there's a set of procedures laid out. The annexation petition review is conducted by what I think is essentially the CRC. Is that not correct? And then the staff report that comes out of that has to include all these elements. Again, Gary will go over that. The city's annexation policy under the general plan essentially has six main areas. There's a small area down here, industrial area in, down by East Bay. And then there's a section down to the south end of the city, a section out by the lake, and then some areas up in the hillsides. Basically, some general plan guidelines. When the property is annexed to the city, the property is annexed to zones, the lowest density or intensity zone allowed under that land use designation. The two areas that are, there's actually three areas that are coming before council in the near future. The first one you'll see right after this presentation, and it has to do with an annexation in Area 2, which calls for accommodation of light and heavy industry in this section. And then there has been some discussion of a proposed development up on the east side, the northeast side of the city. And the affected areas would be Area 5 and Area 6 of that land use map. So those will be coming to at some point, but they're not ready at this point. Within the general plan, there's quite a big section under 1.2.10. And these are just two basic highlights of some consideration or some tools that can be used. You can create a project redevelopment option or Prozone. And then there's also specific development plans that can come up under your, under the city's general plan. Now I'm going to turn the time, then I'm going to turn time to Gary McGinn to walk you through this guide that we just handed out. In there, you'll see a petition flow chart. And then Gary Millward, and I don't know how I put that up there, but it's up there. This is basically a time flow and a process flow according to the state code that we need to follow. So we'll get back to there.
In an annexation, when it comes into the city, there's really two separate processes that need to be followed. There's a city wand and then there's the state code. And annexation is really to a large, to the greatest degree, covered by state code. And Gary Millward put together a pretty good flow chart that you'll see after that that follows the state code timeline as it goes through. So with this annexation guide that we have, it's a guide that we put out to help people generally through the process. And as Cliff mentioned earlier, there may be some tweaks that we need to do in the city code, but there are probably some tweaks that we need to do, but they're no different than a lot of tweaks we need to do in the city code. For some reason, in the past, the city, when we've cited the state code, sometimes will go in there and put in verbatim what the state code already says. And so when the state code makes a slight change to something, our code is now inconsistent with what the state code says. And I think historically, I know why we do that, is to try and lay out the whole process so that somebody could just see it right there. But it's probably better to just refer to the state code and then let people look at the process of the state code because you do have to follow both of our processes that they go through, the state and the city. So this annexation guide we give out and it's, we give out a sample petition that they can use and go through that. But this is the important thing that I want to talk about. And it'll play a role with this guide that Gary put together. So if I can instill your thunder a little bit, Gary, is that okay? Talk a little bit about this. So somebody wants to do a petition, they come in and they do their notice that they're going to create a petition, they have to do some things, and it comes over here. And this is the first decision point that the city council has. It's whether to accept an annexation petition. And that happens very early in the process. And you can see, so it comes in and you typically have 10 days from when the petition comes in. It'll come before you. If you don't act, it's deemed as accepted, which then means it opens up the whole big process that we go through. If you don't even want to entertain an annexation, because whether you think it's premature, whether you think it's inconsistent with our general plan, for whatever reason, you can say no at that initial point. From there, then going through this process, a whole lot of things happen and a whole lot of time and effort and money and expenses put forward by a lot of people in the process. So, so...
Question?
Yes.
So in order for us to make the decision to accept and deny, we have to have a petition that has at least 51% of those people agreeing.
Yes, and there's some standards that they have to go through. And I think it is 51%, a third of all property and...
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the assessed value.
It is assessed value. There's a little bit of criteria.
Right. And typically, when somebody is petitioning the city for X, Y, or Z, if they change their mind down the line, they can withdraw.
Yes.
But that doesn't always happen with annexations. I mean, case in point, I remember a long time ago, I think it was northeast Provo, where initially they had 51% and more or more, but then someone pulled out after we had started down this road and we just kept going.
Yeah, and you can do it under certain circumstances. You have to have some sponsors and the requirements. So somebody can drop out, but yet the annexations still go forward and actually happen. And the city can, and Cliff alluded to this earlier, the city can begin annexation proceedings for things without a petition coming in. So the first decision point for the city, the municipal council is really to accept or reject the petition.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
So if, sometimes we have three weeks apart as a city council, what happens to that?
Then we'd have to have, if it falls into one of those areas, we would have to have a special meeting. And if we do not have a special meeting, it would be deemed accepted. So you have to affirmatively say, we don't, we don't want to deal with this petition. Okay, so now I'm going to go back to the previous chart of our internal situation. So that hearing is right up here about whether you initially want to accept or reject that petition. And if you accept it, this is what happens. So internally in the city. So you accept it for further review. At the same time, it goes over to that CRC group. And the CRC group starts reviewing it because our ordinance requires, the city and state law requires us to go through and analyze any petition for like utilities, consistency with the community, you know, all of the requirements that we have. It goes through that, we put it on planning commission, and planning commission eventually would provide a recommendation. Over here, you come in, that petition, it goes, so you accept it, it goes through this process. Over here, the city recorder reviews it to make sure that it meets state law requirements, that it has all of the initial things that are required for it to go through. And then you have to start sending in, noticing for your hearings that you'll have on it. There's a protest period that Gary will go through that that could happen. And so as this timeline goes through, staff works on it this way and then ultimately comes to the council. And at this point, assuming that there's no protests, and this doesn't anticipate protests. If there are no protests, you make a decision either to accept or deny. And then if you accept it, then we do an ordinance that annexes something in, we work with the lieutenant governor's office, and it becomes property of Provo, incorporated into the jurisdiction of Provo City. And so you either to initially accept or deny the application, that's a decision point for the council. If you don't do anything or you affirmatively accept it, then it goes through this process and the next time you'll see it is when it comes down to you after recommendation from the council and staff recommendations. You will then at that point, assuming that there are no protests that are successful and the petition meets all of the requirements, you will then have to make a decision of whether to annex it into the city. Now, if you annex it into the city, the property actually comes in at the lowest density level of our zone. So if it's an agricultural zone and the general plan says it should come in as agricultural, it will come in as 40-acre agricultural zone, which means you can put one house on every 40 acres. If it comes in and it's general plan residential, it would come in at basically an R120, which is one single-family home for every 20,000 square feet.
What if the city has promised the people a different zone?
Promised who? Which people?
People being annexed.
Oh, then if the city has promised them that, it depends on, number one, who is the city? And in this case, the only group that would count would be the municipal council because you're the only group that can rezone property to a certain level. So if they come in and I say, hey, you come in, I promise you, you're going to get a high-density residential zone. That promise is not binding on the council. And the only time the city promises something that's actually legally binding would be at the time they came in. By law, it would come, by our code, it would come in at the lowest level, which would be 20,000 square foot, single-family home, 20,000 square foot. They would then have to make a rezone application and the council would have to rezone it at that time. So when you get an annexation, frequently the annexation is inconsistent with our general plan. Because often, a property that comes in to be annexed will be, say, in a general plan is agriculture. But the intent of the applicant is for it to be residential. So when they bring in their application, they, for an annexation or go forward on that, they know they'll have to do a general plan amendment and a text amendment to go along with that. Now, one of the, kind of one of the difficult areas is historically, Provo City, we've had a tendency to not necessarily general plan property, what we think it will turn into eventually, but we've say maybe general planned agriculture. And then they come in, they do a general plan amendment, then they do a rezone to get it from agriculture into residential. And so when a petition comes in, one of the things that we'll be looking at is, is it consistent with our current general plan? And a lot of them aren't. And so the council really has two approaches into handling that. One, you can accept an annexation petition and go through the process. And as a part of that, expect to have a general plan amendment and a rezone that would go along with the annexation, pretty much together. Or you can say, well, no, if you're inconsistent with the general plan, we're not even going to accept your petition until you do a general plan amendment and go through that process and amend the general plan to the type of use you would like to see in the future. And that's kind of a policy question for the council really to figure out the best way to handle that process.
How do you go ahead and general plan property and then shop within the city?
State law has us go out and requires us, if there are areas outside the city that we could foresee coming into the city, to go in and general plan those. And occasionally, we may have a conflict with another aborting municipality that some property that we have in our long-term annexation plan to come to Provo City, they may have in theirs. And over the years, we've had some minor issues with that with Orem. And as a matter of fact, if you remember, do you remember how long ago it was, Wayne, we did a minor adjustment to our boundary between Orem and Provo?
Along the river?
Yeah, along the river and Cardiffville Road and...
About four or five years.
Yeah, that, okay, four or five years ago.
Down on the west side? Did that 2000 or...
2000 north. And that was...
The Orkin Black property.
Yeah, that, the Orkin Black property, that was one that, oh boy, back in the late 90s or something like that.
Early 2000s. It was about the time I got here, so 2003, 2004.
And before that, there was an annexation petition. And one of the issues that came up was this conflict, is it in Orem, is it in Provo? And we actually went to the county boundary commission to, and in the legal department, I handled that issue for us. And so we do have the legal ability to do that. And so the real two big decision points for the council are, do you even accept the annexation petition? Are you comfortable enough there to go through that process? And then if you do, then ultimately, once everybody has done all the work and the analysis and everything like that, then at that time, do you say yes or no? And then layering on top of that, how do you deal with the general plan and what's the best process and way to deal with the general plan?
I remember a lot of our work with Tom Kirk with Kirk Motors where he felt that the city had promised him the same exact zoning that he had in the county, but he came in as M1 instead of M2. So he was all of a sudden non-conforming and that caused a lot of grief. So in his case, he thought we would have benefited from having changed the general plan ahead of the annexation so that he wouldn't come in annexed and then be begging for what he was promised or what he expected.
And that could be a way to do it. Because if you look at, and earlier in the presentation, Cliff talked about the map that showed the different areas. So if you look at this guide...
The map's in there.
Oh, the map's in there. Okay. So...
Where's that?
Oh, okay. So it shows the map, the different areas. So it shows the map, the different areas that we have. Then if you look at this, so you know, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So if you then go farther in our general plan, it talks about Area 5. And this is the general plan statement that we have for Area 5. So when something in Area 5 comes in, we're looking at it saying, okay, we can service this area. We have existing water pressure up to elevation of 5,200 feet. We can do sewer. Main lines need to be brought in. We do have some hillside development. And it's general plan residential. So coming in, somebody who don't want to do a residential plan, these are some of the issues that they need to deal with. Now, if somebody's coming in in Area 6, it comes in, it says, the area encompasses forest service in different areas, and says, even though this area contains steep slopes of, it would be annexed into Provo to preserve the hillside from future mining uses. So the general plan anticipates that if this were to come in, it would come in to preserve the hillside. And so if somebody wanted to develop it, you kind of have now to make a decision, okay, do you develop, if they make their application and we accept it, do we, if we're going to accept it, do we want them to do a general plan amendment first, or do we want to accept the annexation and do a general man, a general plan amendment at the same time? Now, the problem with annexation and a general plan amendment and rezoning amendments coming in at the same time, state law has some strict requirements on timing and things like that that we have to follow.
Why, I'm struggling with why we would not annex anything. Because are we, are we obligating ourselves? If we annex somebody, are we obligating ourselves to provide services?
Yes.
What are those services then? That's the issue.
Police, fire, water, sewer, storm drain, electricity. And it is not a...
Are we storm draining? You have to do the storm drain and electricity?
Sure, we got to do everything.
We're obligated to give that to that area?
Well, we're obligated to service that area. It doesn't mean we necessarily have the capacity and ability to do it right now, today. And that would be part of any annexation analysis that staff would do. We would go through and talk about the existing utilities in the area, how far away sewer, water, electricity is from it. Some areas in an annexation, if you annex an area and it's currently being served by, and they change their name, so I just keep calling them UP and L, because I can't keep up with their name changes. So if their service, their electricity is serviced by UP and L, we have to come up with a plan to buy that infrastructure from them. And, because it's Provo City.
But is it, I mean, I can think of reasons why if we don't like what's being proposed for it, right? Or is that, or is the annexation question stand independent of what's being proposed? It seems like it would. It would come, be, they'd come together.
They, they do come together. So if somebody's annexing into the city, so let's say you have an annexation area, and we say, we want residential in this area. And somebody comes in, and that's all it says. Well, it doesn't say whether we want low-density residential, or we want high-density residential. So knowing what they're going to do could play a role in that. Or it could be that they come in, they say, we want residential, but they're proposing a heavy industrial use. And so that would be inconsistent with our current plan, and you, the council would have to grapple with that policy question of, do we annex them in? Then do we change the zoning and the general plan and go through it? Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I have another one. Let me just say, mostly to the counselors, we're now five minutes over on this item, so we want to keep that in mind. The other thing is, I mean, reading Area 6 here, seems to suggest that, you know, if this were to be annexed, it would be annexed mostly for preserving the hillside. So we would still need to provide services if there's a wildfire, and we're the ones that are frontline on that. But it doesn't necessarily say that, you know, by annexing, annexing it, we have to approve development to go in today.
Correct. You do not.
Is the pay annexation at 5 or 6, or a combination?
Uh, I think pay is 5.
5?
Yeah, below the hills, 5.
We, when I called Gary earlier, he thought it was kind of a little bit 5 and definitely 6.
Okay, well, the pay's here, there's other talk of 1 up here, and I think that's 5 and 6.
I guess it's 6 and 5.
Bob Jones, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's 5 and 6.
That's, okay, so it's Bob Jones is 5 and 6. And pay is this, it's really hard to see, but it's just this little peninsula right down there.
So does the general plan...
And then 7 is where 4,800 north comes down the hill. That's 7. It's a complete island in Provo City.
Can I ask one more question? So the general plan currently has language that pertains to the entirety of Area 6, for example?
Yes.
Is that, I mean, I don't, I'm not familiar with that language, so I don't need to be, but, but, I mean, if we, if we saw a reason to rethink what the general plan called for, then we would do an amendment to the general plan? I'm just wondering if that's also a consideration in some of these questions? If you feel like the general plan is somehow outdated for whatever reason, and interests have shifted, and we would prefer a different designation?
And as I understand it, when you bring some property in, then all other aspects, you initially bring it in as something unless you do it, as you said, a general plan update or something conjunction with. But otherwise, you bring it in, it's set in the service on the general plan, it's set as what it is, and then all other possibilities of change in zoning, change in the general plan, that's all up in the, you know, all up the grabs.
And right now, all of 6 is general plan to be agriculture. So if you annexed all of 6, it would come in at agriculture A1, 40 acre lots.
So majority of that's also forest service plan?
Yeah.
Once you go past a certain point, you're there about that.
And then most of 5 is residential, but I think there are some areas in 5 that are general planned agriculture. So when the city, if there was not a concurrent general plan amendment and rezone with an annexation, for anything in 5 and 6, they would come in as agriculture or R120.
Gary, so the broad village development, basically, does not meet the general plan?
Uh, well, it, I haven't seen the, if it's in...
Much more dense than R10, without question.
Well, it would come in as resident, in Area 5, parts of Area 5 is residential. And it would come in as R120. And so that residential, unless there's, Brian, in the specific neighborhood, is there talk about the density and things like that? I can't remember.
They had a map, but we haven't had any details because they clustered down all...
No, not their map, our map. In our general plan, in the neighborhood, I don't think there is. I think it just says residential. So residential can mean R120, or it could mean high-density. You'd have to figure that out. Now, agriculture in the general plan would mean A1, 40 acre lots.
I think we even said RAs for correct pays property, just because it was residential.
In the general plan, yeah.
Well, the information given us today says it's residential, so it's not specifying what residential, so it could come in residential, high-density residential.
Well, no, it would come in automatically, unless there's a rezone application, it'd automatically come in at R120. And, and I'm sorry if I misspoke.
So the concern with neighborhood, if we accept the annexation, somehow we're accepting the development, it's not the case?
They would have to go through at least a rezone, if not a general plan amendment.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I mentioned, there's also confusion sometimes because you hear of the ag protection areas, which is, you know, a designation people can voluntarily create with the county. And you cannot force those areas into an annexation or a rezoning. That's a...
Maybe just one observation, having worked in the city where annexations were frequent, multiple times a year traditionally, the challenge, the law was, as it's currently drafted, really was about not stringing a potential developer along under false pretenses. So in other words, to say, before the developer spends a fortune in acquiring land or committing, you know, to improvements, they get an early indication as to whether the city would even remotely consider doing an annexation. Now again, as Gary's outlined in the, in the plan and the flowchart, actual annexation decision could be months after the decision to accept the petition. But the further the developer goes in the process, the more difficult it is to say no. Because there's been a sense that if you said, yes, we're willing to consider your annexation, they cross a hurdle. And then there's another hurdle, and another hurdle. And the further you go down the road, before, if you're going to say no, it's better to say no earlier. But one of the things that Gary suggested, that I think, I think has some merit, is considering this idea of doing a general plan amendment before you even accept the annexation petition. The idea being that you vet the potential density, you vet the potential design, you look at a number of these issues in terms of intensity of use at least, before you ever accept the original annexation petition. It's a much more public process. Neighborhoods can weigh in, residents can weigh in, and the developer doesn't invest, at least theoretically, doesn't invest a whole lot of money until he gets through that first hurdle, which brings a lot of, a lot of community input into the process.
Why would you do that?
I'm not sure, if I were a developer, why I wouldn't. I would want to get that indication first, if I was going to fight the battle. But, but there are also developers who, you know, may choose to, you know, really push on the firm legal requirements and say, I'm not obligated to do this under the code, and if I, you know, if I'm planning to get this development come hell or high water, I might not. And I, having worked in Weaver County and a community that went through this, we saw developers of both sides. You know, we'll just force our way through the legal process, or we'll go through, you know, a more collaborative process. So again, I'm just, just, again, having, having walked through that a number of times over a number of years, it seems to me like that's, that's a really smart first step.
And we can decide whether to do that or not.
Again, I'll defer to legal on that question, but yes.
And I'd like to make two points. First, that Wayne said I said something you agreed with. And so in, so in freedom, this is a banner day. And the second one is, is I think in the long run, kind of the course of action that Wayne laid out makes a lot of sense. Because once you accept a petition, a lot of things happen, and a lot of money starts getting spent. And if the general plan isn't clear of what you're getting, or somebody's coming in and wants something that's inconsistent with the general plan, as you accept the petition and then go through this whole process, and then at the end of the day, you decide, nah, that's not really with consistent what, what we're doing. Now you have developers who spend a lot of time and money, and are pretty frustrated and feel that you have a moral obligation to approve them because you accepted their petition.
Real quick, really, really quick, yeah. If we accepted a, a general plan amendment, let's say for the northeast part of Provo, and said, oh yeah, we love whatever is proposed, and then it gets annexed and they start going forward, and they go, oh, by the way, since you love it, you're going to put in that water tank for us. You're going to help provide the services. And I've seen it kind of both ways, where Steve Stewart was told he needed one in southeast Provo, and he didn't have the money, but then we found the money in Impact V, and the city built the tank for him, so he got to develop. But other people come in, and they go, gee, you're making me do a tank? And we go, yeah. So sometimes it's confusing even to me, when we do a tank, or when we make them do a tank, or, you know, what's the legal...
If we don't have adequate public facilities to service the development, we do not have to go out and put them in. But if you rezone somebody, and you know that's kind of their expectation, kind of puts a moral obligation, and it really makes it difficult to say no. And so if that's a question or concern in, in an annexation, wherever it may be, if some of those utilities and things like that are not worked out, it's probably better not to accept a petition until you get the general plan right. I'm just bad on you, I'm so sorry. Get the general plan right, and work out the utility issues.
So item 20, the pair annexation, you could say, we reject the annexation, it has not been general planned yet, and we might have to do that first?
Hey, you've already accepted the petition.
Who accepted it?
That was accepted in January by the council.
By the council?
Yeah. This isn't the Bob Jones, this is totally different.
This is not where it is.
No, it's not Bob Jones.
Pay is different than Bob Jones.
No, but it became incorporated at one point, or some point. This is the confusion that I'm having with laws.
So we accepted the petition, but now the request has been withdrawn completely, correct?
No, well, he didn't want to be on the agenda yet, is really what it was.
Well, our understanding is that he has withdrawn it.
Withdrawn's different than continue, it says withdrawn.
Yeah, he's told me personally a couple of times, he's not sold his ground project.
But the pay annexation petition that you have accepted in January, as we were going through our process, they have sent us emails saying they are withdrawing that application. So as far as we're concerned...
Starting over.
That application is gone.
So Bob Jones must be really in 7 then? His pay is 6.
Anyway, that's what I... Okay. Just in the interest of your schedule, the pay Jones issue, if it comes back to you, you can address a lot of those questions then. Right now, you've got another one that's coming up on the south end. But if you have questions about the process, the timing, et cetera, et cetera, just forward them through me, and we'll get you an answer, and then bring it back to you.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate that. This is scheduled for 40 minutes, we've taken 40. We're now five minutes behind, and I would really like to get at least 40 minutes on the blue sky thing later. So we will jump to item 9, which is a discussion regarding the East Bay annexation. This is scheduled for five minutes, presented by Brian Maxiel, Provo City Planner.
Okay, this one's quite different than the other ones in that. It's in Area 2, down below the city. The general plan for this area is industrial, they're proposing industrial storage units. And I think the biggest thing with this item is, this light gray is the area that's not in the city yet. The more colored ones are the ones that are in the city. You see this M2 that comes down, it'd be an obvious extension of an M2 zone, or either one with a lot of the storage. It does not include the Nelson property, another property which the same storage people own in this area. This road right away is Provo City up to a point, but these large areas are the railroad, and then the largest areas are Pacific State's cast iron. The only way they could do this with their 51% of the signatures is 100% of the signatures by bringing in their own property. And so they didn't include the others. This piece has some other issues that they wanted to keep that in development in the county for its storage units, some of which has to do with some solar panels and some other aspects. The petition right now deals only with this piece right there.
There's already services available?
They're in the street up through this area, that they can pull down to that area, water, water, principally.
Just pull it out to your, just create a timeline.
I have some of these documents that I have in OnBase.
I'm looking at the sections in the, in the agenda. So they have a timeline proposed of June of this year, complete the annexation, and then get their project plans approved in August, begin construction in September, and by April 2020, they hope to be done.
Yeah, right now, with acceptance of this petition, we'd likely be able to have it on the July 10th Planning Commission meeting. on the July 10th Planning Commission meeting. And then you'd schedule out, as Gary mentioned, there's a noticing period, you know, protest or everything else, 21 days, I think three consecutive weeks of notice before you would have it on the city council. So, there is a gap between that. We are looking at a confirmed project plan for the area, that's where they'd address some of the utilities and the other items that have to extend to this side. The western, I can't think of the recycling places, the adjacent area next to it, they have services, so they could, you know, extend from that.
So, the only thing for the council to consider tonight is whether or not to approve the...
Accept the petition.
Accept. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Not to Bob Jones' annexation.
All right. Item we've all been waiting for, item 10, the discussion regarding the resolution authorization of the chief executive officer to enter into a lease agreement with New Sky Development to allow them to utilize parking spaces for a pending mixed-use project at 105 East Center Street. Mr. David Walter will be presenting this, he's our director of redevelopment, and this is budgeted for 40 minutes.
So, between the time that this last appeared before council, we've had the opportunity to meet with most of the council members, and Mr. Christensen's had the chance to present his reasoning for his request to the majority of you, and his, also his reasoning for not wanting the automatic renegotiation clause that had been previously discussed here at the work session in the contract. He feels that that would interfere with his leases that he would have with his potential commercial tenants. You know, giving him a timeframe that if he doesn't, you know, construct within so many years after pulling a building permit, that's not an issue, he's fully intense to move ahead with the project. But if the council were to have a clause that would automatically renegotiate the allocation of parking spaces after he's signed a lease with potential restaurant or office users, that would be interesting. We have not had the chance to meet with, you know, all the council members, and so I'm not quite sure if the council is ready to say yes, we'll go with the 36, the 55, but, you know, we won't dedicate the spaces, we will allocate him the spaces, but we won't dedicate the spaces. And that's kind of what I would look for from the council for that. And Mr. Christensen will be available tonight at the meeting if you want to talk to him. Yes, sir.
So, looking at the parking structure, we already have some that are designated parking.
We do, and so Peg Development, who is now the current owner of 63 East, has on what I refer to as the subterranean levels, they have dedicated, but those are dedicated for the residential tenants of the 63 East complex.
And how many tenants are there?
You're on 55 spaces. I want to say there are 43 units, and so some of them have two cars and...
I went down there at 11 o'clock and did a little survey today, and there's up to, the last number is 79.
Right.
And it starts at one, and a couple of them were given away to the loft, but so there's...
Yeah, so I'm, they have some spaces for the loft users to be able to tie into that.
Right, so there's 79 spaces, and of those 79, there were 11 cars using it at 11 o'clock.
Right. And that's kind of what we would expect to see for residential units.
Right. And the point I'm bringing up is, if we don't kind of mix daytime and evening or nighttime uses, we are woefully underutilizing the structure.
So, it's the ability, I think, to offset the crunch times for the, so typically you would say, the op, I'm sorry, the restaurant uses, they would be more likely to be using the evening. So, I think that for the majority of the restaurants that are in the downtown area, most of your traffic is block-up traffic. So, between the county, New Skin, Provo City, there's quite a large daytime population, so a lot of the restaurants rely on daytime traffic, in addition to whatever the convention center has. They have their conventions, oftentimes you have spillover from the service there.
Mr. Stewart? His development is red, right?
Yes, his development in our parts.
Really, we're giving a concession and getting about what we've always gotten before.
Right, so he's not, so this project, he's not requesting spaces for the residential tenants, he will park those interior to his project. He has a parking garage planned for that, and he's going to house his own, house, he's going to park his own residential tenants. What he's asking for is spaces with Provo City's allocation in the Wells Fargo structure to meet the needs of his commercial tenants.
Isn't, we're confident that he has enough spaces to, really enough spaces for residential.
He is building enough for residential.
Is he required to build residential?
Required to?
For the lower part, apart from he decides, I'm not going to put commercial, I'm not going to put residential in there.
He has told several of the council members that he is too far down the path to back off and do, so...
Would that be part of the development agreement, that he has to build a commercial?
It can't be.
I think it should be, if you're going to...
If he's making that assumption or presentation, that he's going down that road, there's no return, then that's something that he may want to commit to in a development agreement.
Perhaps another way to address that would be to make the lease of these parking stalls contingent on there being commercial space there, because it wouldn't make sense.
Doesn't make any sense otherwise.
To lend, lease in the stalls if he's not doing commercial.
If we're using those stalls mainly for standard use of the commercial, that's a loser choice, really, gates are a choice.
So, I was just asking Dave, he wants dedicated spots, he doesn't want allocated spots. My sense was that was kind of a firm line, that he doesn't feel like allocated would do him any...
Well, he wants, so in his negotiations with potential tenants, I mean, they've all said the same things, where are my people going to park? And we have had similar conversations with Mr. Bill Bancroft, who's the owner of the Taylor Brothers Building, where Google Fiber is, and recently has been trying to backfill the space that Joe Vera occupied, when Joe Vera was in that building, with another restaurant. So, this question's come up independent of Mr. Christensen, but there are, so, I think, you know, if you were to look at the structure today, absent the residential spaces that are on the subterranean levels, Wells Fargo, I believe, only has four or five spaces, let's say, parking for Wells Fargo's customers only. On the third or fourth level of the structure, there are a few signs, maybe three, maybe four, that say, customer parking, one hour limit. The rest of them are not allocated or dedicated, let me put it that way.
My experience with dedicated parking is that, for the most part, it just ties up parking. As I look at my restaurant where I rent, I rent the Von Bay House Restaurant, and as soon as I start putting, all right, they want so many parking stalls, well, my next tenant, Comerol Banker, wants so many dedicated stalls, if they get it, we get it, and we just lose parking. It becomes unusable for the public. I'm quite adamant that I don't want to dedicate. And I struggle, and the next question I have Dave is, what about where Los Hermanos was? What happens there, closer than this project to the parking? And do we want to neglect that ground for something that's a block away, you know, a half a block away from something? We've got, we, I think we need to make sure that we're incentivizing what we want, where we want it. And I struggle with that Los Hermanos piece. Putting in a new restaurant there with no parking, that we can't at least give them an opportunity to say, yeah, you can send some people over here, I don't want to dedicate it, even them, but I, I'm not sure that all 55 should go to him, especially at the rate he's proposing to pay.
So, this, for me, is a very complicated question, and there's a lot of, a lot of aspects to weigh in, and I'm struggling to, you know, see an easy solution, a simple solution. Just add a couple comments, things that Evan said, I think it was like three. It was mentioned, you know, we need to be, we need to incentivize what we want and kind of communicate that or whatever. And I agree that these stalls were purchased, you know, we participated with the idea that they would be used to spur growth downtown. And I think that's kind of what this negotiation between the RDA and Mr. Christensen has been about, you know, hey, you've got these stalls, I want these stalls, and that will help me build this building with ground floor commercial, as the city has indicated that they want to incentivize. And now, it's coming time to kind of fulfill those, you know, negotiations or kind of what has been worked out. And, you know, so, that's something that's weighing on me, that there may have already been kind of this expectation, there's already been negotiations, there's already been momentum behind this project, based on the idea that these stalls were originally purchased by the city in order to facilitate just what's being proposed right now. There was a comment about the daytime walk-in population for the lunches. Last night, we met with someone who manages, runs several downtown restaurants, and to him, parking is a really big deal. He feels that some of his establishments probably double their lunchtime, he was being specific about lunchtime, but double their lunchtime traffic activity were not for the limitations that are facing the parking. It just so happens to be, he's one that's in negotiations with Mr. Christensen for this, and so a lot of what we've heard Mr. Christensen said actually came from this person. And what's interesting is because he owns and operates multiple sites downtown, he sees it from multiple vantage points, because the very thing that Mr. Christensen's asking almost on his behalf would negatively affect other properties that he's operating down there, for example, the communal's right across the street from the Wells Fargo building. And right now, we have, you know, the city still has, what, 120 stalls unallocated, but there's not 120 stalls empty, and that's because we allow free unlimited public parking in there. And Wells Fargo itself, that they, sorry, the office building is now filling in more and more people work there. And so, since they're not only, you know, tenants of the building, but they're also the general public, we probably have a lot more people, office workers parking in there than are allocated to Wells Fargo, to the office building, but they're just using the public spaces. So, if we were to add a bunch of new tenants, new patrons looking for parking there, because we have a bunch of new retail and restaurants, they're now competing for spaces that other customers of his other restaurant are using now, particularly if things start getting dedicated. And so, now, those stalls are being less efficiently used, and, you know, if it gets to the point where people have allocated spaces that they can't use because the general public is parking in there, now are we starting to use gates and manage who can go in and who can go out, and that's going to hurt his other restaurant properties. And there's another spot where in particular, there's a whole bunch of dedicated stalls in a parking garage that we just, Provo City happens to own but not manage, and he is very frustrated at the inefficient use of those stalls. And would love to see the city take back management of that garage so that we could manage it more efficiently, because he feels that his restaurants are underperforming because of that. And he really feels, so from a potential occupant of this red sky ground floor, he definitely wants to see that parking, he wants that parking available, but he also is very concerned just generally in the whole downtown. And I kind of get the feeling that a lot of people downtown feel this way, that there's not convenient parking, and that is inhibiting the economic vitality of our downtown, it's limiting it. And so, if we can figure out a way to better manage and better provide convenient parking in downtown, then we will see far better economic activity downtown. So, it is very interesting to see, to hear his perspective. I wish he'd clarified our decision a little bit more, but if anything, it seemed to just make it a little more complex, as there's, no matter what we do, there's going to be pros and cons to it and difficult trade-offs.
So, this potential tenant is familiar with the Wells Fargo parking structure and how it's being used. Did he express an opinion on whether allocated parking would work, or whether he felt it would need to be dedicated?
I wasn't the only one in the meeting, it's always difficult to be too specific about it. I tried to pin it down a little bit when I said, well, you know, so what are your recommendations? Kind of hoping to get that, and that's when we went back to, you know, takeover management of one of these other garages that we own. Mr. Strachan, you were there, what would you say is final?
It seems that where the New Sky proponent wants dedicated because he wants to be able to guarantee, the Mr., there's a vision to have Pizza 712 come in, plus some others, and the owner of Pizza 712 indicated that, as I understood it, that he likes the allocation method better because it allows for more flexibility, but he needs a certain allocation. And so, on one hand, he kind of wants to have them dedicated, but he called it an allocation, he wants to know that they're there. The challenge he's got is that he knows that that parking is being bled away by his other customers walking an extra block or so to other restaurants down on University, because partly the, what is the name of that parking, Central?
Provo Town Square.
Town Square. Provo Town Square parking is so inefficient and unavailable because so much of that is designated.
I wonder, did, we didn't, when we met with Mr. Christensen, I don't think this came up, but I'm wondering if a combination of allocation and dedication works, you know, if we conceded that, okay, we'll give you the 55, but we're not going to give all 55 of those to you as dedicated, we'll allocate 30, and then we'll dedicate 25, and then we'll revisit this in a year, we'll revisit in two years, and revisit in three years, and see where we're at, whether we need to renegotiate the expansion of dedication, whether, because, I mean, from your last presentation, there are just so many contingencies that we still don't know, right? There's the 80 spots that have been allocated but not yet.
So, we're still, I need to be with legal to verify if we can terminate that or do anything.
I'm just wondering if there's, if they, I mean, we can ask this tonight, but I don't know with the rest of you, whether something like that, that's a little more flexible, and that's also sort of revisitable after periods of time, so that you can examine whether or not that dedication is appropriate now.
Part of the challenge with dedication of one property is then, in the late time where you try to dedicate their property, it's going to force everybody's parking up. If you put the dedication on the top, people are going to use all the empty spaces, and those spots will sit empty, because very few people want to ride to the top. The purpose of having a parking garage in addition to having a compact area is that people like to have a covered parking in summer.
people like to have a covered parking in summer and winter. So what, you, you may then also face pressures from existing allocations to want to have their dedicated spots. And then eventually you have a completely inefficient use of parking.
Yeah. And, and I also love that, I want, we help so many new businesses and how are we helping communal? How are we helping the other communities that have been paying taxes, that have been here forever by taking their parking and giving it to somebody that's brand new? Now they have nothing for their tenants because it's dedicated. I don't mind allocating as much, but dedicating really, um, to me it handicaps so many things in our downtown area, so other, so many other businesses in our downtown area.
So, um, just real quickly to clarify before, you know, I try to answer any of the questions is that in our conversation with the representatives, the owner of the Wells or Models building, they would like to add residential, at least two floors of residential above what they currently have. So they would have the restaurant, they would have the office space on the second floor and then at least two levels of residential. And that they clearly would want dedicated spaces in the structure. They haven't said this, but for the residential tenant, that would be consistent with what we did with 63.
So speaking of 63, is there any way to go back and renegotiate the fact that they're sitting there until most of the day and it could be maybe shared, uh, certain hours?
You can talk to them about that.
And that's, and that's what I, that's what I'm afraid, for, for the decision we have tonight, that's what I'm afraid of is, is making a commitment now, it's going to last 24 years and it's going to tie our hands. For, for residential to work is really nice. If you bought a fairly expensive condo or if you're renting a fairly expensive apartment, you kind of want to know that you've got a stall that you can pull into at night and you're not hiding, you know, other people for, for spots. So that, that makes sense. But at 11 o'clock in the morning, when it's a little pre-lunch rush, but, I mean, it's getting into that lunch rush period where we have restaurants and, you know, maybe it's wishful thinking, but they really feel like they could do a lot better. And then there's a lot of anecdotes on why they think that they could do a lot better if they had more convenient parking. And we have, what was it, 75 of them and only 11 of them are being used. And so, you know, perhaps, perhaps residential doesn't work well with the evening restaurant usage, but it could work very well with the lunchtime, um, restaurant usage. And then at night for the evening restaurant usage and when residents are using that, the office workers are gone. So there's, there's actually a lot of synergy there. And if we allow ourselves the flexibility, you know, if, if they're going to want a bunch of, of dedicated stalls for, for their residential, perhaps it's dedicated, but only after 5:00 PM or after 6:00 PM or something like that. So they're pretty much guaranteed that they're, you know, that they're going to have that spot. Um, but it's still flexible for use during the day. But that, that's the kind of stuff that ebbs and flows and you have to actively manage to make sure that, um, you know, you're meeting everyone's needs and, and, you know, I, that's why I think, and I think we were, we were headed in that direction with our strategic study, uh, parking study and, and some of the activities that were going on. I felt like we were working our way towards that.
Who's Matt?
Um, but, uh, and, and so I worry that, that today, if we, if we just, if we commit 55 stalls, particularly dedicated, 24 years, we've lost a huge asset that, that we've invested in. And as, as Mr. Winter's been pointing out, these stalls are, you know, more and more they're, they're being used. And there's a lot of value in that public stall being able to turn over multiple times throughout the day and support our communals and support like all of, all of this. There's a lot, it's not just we bought these stalls and, and, you know, for a future use to incentivize economic development. They're being used now to address some of our downtown parking problems. And so by, by committing them, either allocated or designated, particularly designated, we're now losing the value that we're getting out of them right now. And that's, that's a pretty high, high cost.
Based on my thoughts on this whole issue, I'm, I'm probably not going to give another vote for missing response to McKay, Christensen. I think you're right that it's just too risky to take that public asset and commit it for that many years without knowing what other use it might have. Can we, do you feel comfortable, George, about dedicating a few? He says he needs 36.
We, we say he needs 36.
No, community development. When they ran the calculations, that was where the 36 comes from. Because what they did is they said, you're showing, on your plans, you're showing this is office, this is as restaurant. And so applying the ratios and then deducting out the 25% reduction, that's how you got to the 36.
To me, his parking minimums, he needs 36. He's asking for, and pretty much saying that I've, we've been negotiating, I've been told 55, I want 155.
And he wants them dedicated. I mean, I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, since the owner of Pizzeria 712 is also the owner of communal and also the owner of Black Sheet.
And Station 22.
And Station 22. I mean, I have to say, these are, these are crown jewels in our downtown as far as the restaurant business goes. These are the best places in Utah Valley to eat. And I say that not only as a connoisseur of fine dining myself, but as a BYU employee who is often hosting people, those are the places we go every time. And if Pizzeria 712 is downtown, I'm, I'm, we're going to, we're going to see a ton of people on business opportunities, you know, getting hosted at that restaurant. Those are, those are fine, fine experiences. So, I mean, I, these, these, this is a great opportunity. So I'm really, I'm really not wanting to endanger the opportunity. But if, if it's the same person, I mean, he's not the only business that wants to go in there, but, but if that's, if he's one of the major players here and he sounds a little less adamant about needing dedicated spots, I don't know, I mean, that's at least from what you're telling me. It seems to me that part of his anxiety is, is more downtown area in, in, in general, right? And it's something about the city's failure to adequately address the parking problems downtown through proper management of the spaces that we've got. And we know that's where parking was headed and obviously still needs to head. I mean, I, I don't know if there's time to make some commitments that that's, that's what we're going to do to ease some of those pressures. Because if it is actually the same customers, I mean, or the, the same businessman who's got the same pressure points on those, those spots and he recognizes that there's now a more adequate system on the other side of University Avenue and it's better managed by the city and that's, that's providing a little more flexibility over there. And, um, anyway, I, I just, I'm, I'm not yet at a coherent proposal, but I, I just don't want to, I mean, I don't want to feel like we're being held hostage here, but I also don't want to endanger the project. And I don't know, you know, if he'll strike a different tone tonight, but he definitely seemed pretty firm on that. I didn't have this bit of information that the restaurant owner doesn't feel quite as firmly as he seemed to make it sound about dedicated spots. But because it seemed like there was some flexibility in there with the 80 slots and we're talking now about flexibility in schedule and maybe even flexibility in the number dedicated versus the number allotted. I mean, I did, I, I'd like to find a solution where we get the 55 spots that he can lease. And if, and if there's a combination of a number of them that are dedicated or a, a combination of a number of them that are flexibly overlapping with daytime and nighttime schedules and we also move in the direction of managing the other parking facilities more efficiently, maybe that, maybe that settles their anxieties enough. I don't know. I'm just trying to think creatively, creatively here. I just don't want to, I just don't want to send a message, no, sorry. And then it's like, well, wait a minute, that was, this is a great opportunity. This is exactly the kind of thing that we want downtown.
Um, we want to welcome the mayor and also...
Well, Jason, I, I'm on the ULCT board and that means the longest on the record so far, so I apologize.
You're good. Um, and also Mr. Van Buren joined us just after our local call. Just wanted to welcome him as well. And then, um, I appreciate Mr. Parker being here. We would like to kind of get the administration's perspective on this.
Well, let me just share a couple of thoughts. I apologize, I've got water dripping in my basement at home from my, from a bathroom, so I've been trying to talk to my wife and daughter through this problem while we've been, while I've been out. But, um, so the, um, in terms of the Wells Fargo building, I think our intent at taking the 120 stalls to begin with was to incentivize what we wanted to have happen downtown. Uh, we've seen projects come and go where we've committed and then they've not materialized or, or otherwise. We've, we've tried to stay on top of that question. We've terminated one agreement that we had for the old University Tower proposal and now it appears to be maybe coming back. And the challenge is that we've taken opportunities where they've come to us to try to, again, incentivize what we want to do. From a policy perspective, I, I think one of the things we've seen in park, management of parking in other places is the more dedicated spaces you have, the less flexibility you have long-term. And in fact, I, our experience is what Mr. Litterton indicated was that dedicated spaces typically are empty more than they are full. Um, and you would want to try to maximize the value of that parking stall. So there are some potential solutions to that. Uh, we could certainly do kind of permit parking in a parking structure where we don't guarantee you spaces, but we issue you a certain number of permits and recognize like any parking permit program, it's, it's a limited commodity and you will probably issue more permits than you have parking stalls, uh, but you recognize that that's, your, your attempt is to truly maximize the value of every parking stall. And parking stalls in structures are now, you know, $20,000 apiece and you can't afford to let them sit empty much, much of the day if you do that. So, so again, um, there, there may be other ways to try to tackle this. You could, uh, you could simply pay for parking stalls and recognize that employees who are coming to work or visitors who are coming to restaurants will be, you know, they will be, uh, use the parking stalls will be governed by how much they cost. Can you do validation? You can do validation. Again, we don't own and operate any parking structures downtown. Um, and, uh, and so that's a little problematic. We've talked repeatedly about trying to get in that business. Um, and I think there's, I think there's value in us doing that, whether we take over operation of something we own or we build something new or we lease parking stalls that we then turn around and lease to others in existing, um, parking structures or new parking structures for that matter. So again, I guess the bottom line is I don't have a, I don't have a superb answer for this other than that it would traditionally not be from a, from a public policy perspective, a smart thing to dedicate signed parking stalls 24/7 for a given user. Um, it's just not a very good way to do business. You either ration it by price or you ration it by, um, permit, but, but simply designate a parking stall and saying it belongs to X business 24/7 through 65 isn't a, isn't a very smart thing to do generally.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, how would a permit program, I, I can see that for like office buildings, but for a restaurant, how, how would a restaurant use a permit?
Well, again, your, your restaurant has two different parking demands. One is for patrons, one is for employees. And, and what we've seen downtown is a lot of, and I, I fail to understand the mentality of people who let their employees park right in front of their restaurant. Uh, that, that makes absolutely zero sense to me at all. But, you know, one thing you could do is issue permits for employees and then suggest that you have some open public parking places that are shared among, you know, multiple potential users. Or use on-street parking as your predominant method for getting customers in. But you put, you put the staff of the restaurant in a remote, more remote location and they operate with some kind of permit, whether it's a license plate or a, or a hang tag or whatever mechanism you might use to do that. So, um, but you also recognize again, there will be some times, just as there are in every parking permit program we have, there will be people who will cruise the streets that peak hours of parking and not find a space even though they have a permit. Um, but, but again, that's, that's sort of the risk of trying to maximize the value of what parking you have.
So Wayne, uh, Wells Fargo, the owner is?
Duncan Lambert.
I'm sorry?
Duncan Lambert.
Okay, so...
So that's, yeah.
The rights that we, we, so we bought the rights?
We, we reserved the rights.
Yes, we have, we have the rights to 204 spaces out of the structure.
And, but those were anywhere in the structure, nowhere in particular, right?
And that's ends in a certain time period, right? It's not indefinite, isn't it in 2045?
Something like, yeah, 204, 2044.
Okay, so if, if it's anywhere in the structure and that's what we negotiated, how then can we give away something that would be specific to a certain floor?
Yeah, because it seems like it's not even our power to dedicate.
So we have, we have been trying to reach out to the representatives of Mr. Lambert for a while now and haven't really gotten to know her.
Uh, because it brings up the question, if a restaurant wants dedicated spaces, where do they want them? They can't have them on the first level because that's already given away. They don't want them on the top level because it's open air and no one wants to park there. So they're going to want to park where everyone else is currently parking on the second, third, whatever, probably the lowest possible level they could get. And that's going to bounce out everybody that's currently in those spots. And I don't even know if we have the right to do it based on what we've negotiated to have rights in the structure.
The other, the other thing is, is we are not going to be able to go in and, and monitor to make sure that it isn't, we have no way of monitoring whether his customers slash employees are in those spaces. I, I don't believe, you know, they're not, I don't know who's going to take on that burden, but I, it's not.
Who currently controls the ones that are allocated or signed? So, you know, they say you'll be towed, but who's doing the towing?
I would imagine it's PEG's Property Management Services.
Or Wells Fargo.
Or Wells, or Wells Fargo. I mean, if you're...
Owner of the...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what mechanism they're using to make sure that the, the stalls that are, say that they're customer parking one hour only. I don't know how that's, you know, how that's being regulated. They tend not to, you know, on the times that I've driven through the structure, they tend not to be occupied, but...
Well, it's all good reason not to vote for it tonight.
No, that's not my intention.
The, uh, the other thing though is, is if we have someone who is paying per month for these stalls, even if they're just allocated, um, you know, at some point as that garage gets full, either through office, um, workers or just general public, you know, at some point they're going to say, I'm paying for these stalls, I need to have these stalls available to my customers, which then gets really difficult because as, as I said, I mean, one, we, it seems like at the very least we need to start using gates or some other permitting system. And two, because these customers or these, these retail areas, this restaurant retail areas are off-site, you can't just wait for someone to see if they parked and if they walk off-site then, then boot their car like a lot of establishments do when they got dedicated parking or allocated parking right in front of their restaurants. These people are going off-site to get to, you know, the people that have these allocated to them. So it gets very, very difficult.
I know that, or I have been told that in the past, Provo was considered predatory in terms of towing practices. I, I don't, you know, just that, and I know that previous representatives of Provo Town Square have been very vigilant about making sure people didn't park at certain spots. So, I mean, that's, that's anecdotal to be formal. I do know that, that they currently, like the first two levels of that structure are currently on long-term leases to Central Bank.
Of Provo Town Square.
Provo Town Square.
Okay, correct. So, so knowing that we've got a lot of different opinions and things that we're grappling with, what is your recommendation? I know, I know there's kind of a written proposal, but, but having heard our conversation, do you have any words of advice for us?
I, I, I would say we, we can allocate spaces and certainly we're meeting the intent of what, you know, we have always talked about, hey, we're going to help incentivize commercial development and restaurant creation in the downtown. And I think allocating the spaces would do that.
Allocating the 55? Nope. You don't, you're not allocating.
So if you look at it, you know, the, most of it, a lot of it is that he's got office space in it, small, 300, I think it's, I want to say 345 square feet, all, all the property that's going to be along 100 South, that's not deep enough. That's not deep enough really for a restaurant, it's not configured for a restaurant, but it could be, you know, office CPA slash, it could be an attorney, it could be a real estate.
345 square foot offices?
I could, you know, I'm going off my memory right now.
It's a bunch of little offices and it depends on where they put it and those are small.
Well.
Yeah, there were, there were, I imagine that someone might come in and say, well, I want two of these as, as they're filming now or whatever, but yeah, it's a bond per seat that was.
Yeah. So there were six that were 345 and two that were 495. And then out of the restaurant space, yeah, 5,000 square feet of restaurant space shown in the last plan that we, we showed at the RDA Except Committee.
And just while we're kind of throwing out what we would like to see, I mean, I, I still struggle with the 24 years, if we're talking five years, which is reasonable for a, a long-term restaurant lease. You know, then I, I would be much more flexible at what I'd be willing to give if it's a shorter period of time, you know, with the idea that we renegotiate as things go on, as we hopefully take steps towards solving our, our unmanaged parking problems in downtown. So this, we have just hit our time limit on this one. We can go longer if needed, if there's something critical, but we will be, we will be asked to, we will be addressing this tonight. So, I imagine, just ruminate on it a little bit and imagine Mr. Walter is available if we have specific questions between now and then. But I wish us luck tonight, this week, as we take this up and try to make a decision.
When do you think we know about the 80 spot?
In the next couple of days.
Yeah, please.
So, in the past, we've had discussions, what have we implied or promised? I, I take it there's nothing in writing, but what have we?
We have talked about providing parking for his commercial, for his commercial needs.
But allocated or by sign?
Wasn't dedicated.
He doesn't, so now he's coming back saying dedicated is really what he means.
Well, he's saying this, these are, this is what his tenants or potential tenants are telling him is that they have to be dedicated because he picked out the other point.
I have several tenants in my building that would like dedicated things too, and they'd like me to go buy two or three more houses just to make, to turn that into parking so that he can. I just struggle with, you know, we got to be careful about the demands. I'm sure he, I respect him, he's going after everything he can get.
Right.
And I'm grateful that he's willing to come in and do this in our community, but I, I'm struggling with the ask personally.
It's, I think it's important to remember too, that when you're providing a covered parking spot, you're, each, each spot is worth about $75 per month, per, you know, per month. And 55 lots times 12 months times $75, you're about $49,500 a year in a direct subsidy to, 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 to a, to this developer for his requested parking needs and, and if you're dedicating those, they're just not available for others. And there may be some other methods to do it, you know, maybe, maybe there's a way of allocating and putting up signage that indicates that this, that the entire complex is for customers of these various build, blocks or buildings or businesses or whatever. But I don't see how, if you dedicate the entire building, that it's going to be the most efficient use for what the city wants.
And it blows me away at the cost that you mentioned, Wayne, for an individual stall in a parking structure. And where he's wanting to give it's all.
It's only getting worse.
And it's only getting worse than the cost that we're.
To maintain it.
Well, we got the maintenance, this is to build it to start with, then we got the maintenance on top of that. And it's just a challenge.
So, anecdotally, when, when I was first here, we went to Station 22 for one of our son's birthdays, but that was back when the parking access mechanisms were working. And so Station 22 was able to validate our parking for, if we parked on the top, on the top level. And so now with the gates being down and it's kind of a, kind of a free-for-all for that top level, which, you know, in my mind is still the only parking structure in the town that has the top level that's actually used.
All right, well, thank you very much. We will now take a recess for 10 minutes.
We will reconvene and move to item 11, a discussion regarding an update to the Prophecy Code, Title 10, making amendments to the sewer water chapters of the title. This will be presented by Mr. Gary Calder, Water Resources Director, and is budgeted for 30 minutes.
Okay, if you remember, I was here two weeks ago, and we were discussing code changes to Chapter 10, Sections 02, 03, and 04, okay? This is coming before you tonight in the Council for Approval, and I'm guessing that I am here to help answer any questions that you may have as far as the red lines. And we met last time, we had general discussions, we showed the final, but we didn't show the red lines. What we have prepared here is the red lines, if you'd like to discuss those or any questions. Let me just kind of give you a couple reminders of what these three codes are. 02 has to do with our water, our drinking water, okay? We're heavily regulated by the federal government as well as the state. And to help you understand the importance of 1002, when we have a subdivision, a large subdivision come in, by state code, we are required to send that up to the state for their approval so they can look at our code. However, if the state looks at our code and approves it, we do not have to send these documents up to the state, which means that saves the developer time and as far as another review. So currently, the code that we have has been approved as well as we're hoping to have this, so that is one of the reasons. The state looks at those. When I say drinking water, this has to do with our wells, our springs, our distribution system, and how people are hooked into it. That's 1002. 1003 has to do with our sewer collections as well as our treatment, okay? The rules and the regulations. As you're aware, every street we have water and sewer lines in here, and so we try to keep these two utilities in the same location but separated, making sure that we don't have any mixture, because the last thing we want is contaminated water. Elk Bridge is a good example that we just heard about last week. So that is one thing. Here again, the state regulates and the federal government, 1003 as well. 1004, which is the pre-treatment, now this is not the treatment plan itself, this is a good example would be restaurants and businesses, this is the fats, the oils, and the greases that get put into our system. Many of these restaurants and businesses, if there's any chance that they are going to be putting oils, fats, and grease, we require them, if it's, if they can't control it with the grease trap, we require them to pre-treat that, so we don't get these oils and greases because it's a greater cost to us as a city and it affects our treatment. So 1004 is a mandated requirement, and what, 1004 is a very large document, it's almost 75 pages, it's a template that came out of the EPA, it was sent to the state, the state sent it to us, and we made some changes, and we sent it back to the state. So 1004 is, it's a bigger, more cumbersome document, but it's mandated, but that is, that has to do with our pre-treatment, not the treatment that we deal with, our treatment. So those are the three sections that I'm here to talk about today.
What is pre-treatment then? What do they do to pre-treat? And then is this also for only new businesses or is this for all the restaurants in our city now?
Yeah, okay, here's a good example. We have a business over at Ironton that makes pills, okay? They also use a lot of water, okay? What happens with these little gel casings that you make, okay? They use a lot of water to flush through their system, the gel that is made from those pills gets put into our sewer system. It goes so fast, it goes right past the grease trap, which technically is there to catch it, and then it coagulates as it gets into our sewer line, and then it gets down to our lift station, and then it plugs up our lift station so our lift station doesn't work. Pre-treatment means that business is required to change his down-line process so that he can collect that gel before it gets into our sewer line. So that, he's pre-treating the water before it comes into our system. That makes sense.
Okay, and it does make sense, and they can do that. I mean, it's interesting to me because all the restaurants have grease traps.
All the restaurants have grease traps.
And that's supposed to take care of it.
And that does, the grease traps in the restaurants, that would be classified as pre-treatment for them, and it's a very simple process, and we require them to clean those out usually once a month, okay? So that is a form of pre-treatment that we have the higher tech companies that we also treat for. Okay, does that make sense? So this is stuff that we try to treat before we get into our system, because we get that into our system, and then it affects how we treat our water, and that's a fine balance that we're trying to always deal with down there. So those are the two sections. I realize our time, I don't know what questions you have for me, I told Hannah to put up 1004, 1002, which is our water system, so you can see what we did. Now, just a reminder, in January, a lot of the stuff that we had already taken out was put into our development standards, so a lot of that information has been moved over and has been approved by you in our development standards, okay? What you're seeing here is how, what we have done to our code to modify it. And you can see, I hope you can see the colors, but you can see the strikeouts, a lot of these things that we have taken out of here, we have moved into those development standards. So let me just kind of show you in our development standards, this is for all of Public Works, this document here, there are five pages and six pages related to water and sewer, and that's one, single-sided, okay? So a lot of that information just got taken out of here and put into this document and then clarified, so that in the future, in this document, if there's a question or a change that needs to be happened, it could be done very simply without having to make multiple changes in different documents. Here again, the purpose is to try to simplify how our code is understood and read and made it very simple to go through. So, do you want me to go through these? I do know that Dave Decker told me to keep this short because he wants more time and close session, okay? He doesn't want to get cut short, so I'm going to try to keep it short, but if you have any questions, that's what I'm here for.
So I guess my biggest question, I went through it very carefully two weeks ago, has anything changed between your last presentation and--
No, nothing has, well, Rebecca's saying yes, I think maybe Legal made a couple changes, right?
Legal made two changes in 1002, if you go down, go down to section--
Can I have you pan down?
So what is 1002040?
That's a separate document, really?
No, just go down to 1002040.
1002040, oh, I see.
Right there. And so what it used to say was temporary water main connections are not allowed, that was the previously revised change.
This is what used to be said, right?
Yeah, that was the, that was the previous revision. Legal looked at it and said they preferred, it had a little bit more teeth, so they said it shall be unlawful to install or utilize a temporary water main connection. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Now, this is connection to the water main, this isn't, you know, a temporary, like, once it's past the service, you have the meter and so forth, that's okay, but we just don't want people just willy-nilly connecting to the mains. So, and then the other place--
Where another spot?
--that was changed is in--
It's a similar--
Yeah, it's basically the same, same idea, it's 0206. And about halfway down there, we had, we had a similar situation where we had said that we wouldn't allow installations of a private main unless they had entered into a private utility maintenance agreement, and Legal, again, felt that needed more teeth, so they changed it to it shall be unlawful to install a private water main unless they entered into a private utility maintenance agreement prior to installation. So those were the two changes that were made since last year.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, if we can go to 1004? Sorry, it's the other document.
That's the other document, 1002, 1004, and 1004.
Yeah. I was kind of hoping this might change between last time and this time, like, just, it opens up and I look and say, oh, wow, the whole table contents has changed.
If you remember, what we decided last year, what Brian Jones asked us to do is to replace the entire section with this new section instead of trying to--
Yeah, yeah. So in our, in our documents, I think we still have the red line version, which was, like, the way that it turned out, it was like 100% stripped and out and then 100% replaced, and so--
Just a good word, I suppose.
Yeah, okay, that still looks different. Anyway, okay, so I take back my comment, man, thank you.
But if someone's made one of these, can I send it to last?
Okay.
Okay, is there any other questions that you have for me regarding this? Okay, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
Exciting topic.
Thank you, Mr. Calder. Item 12 is a discussion of proposed amendments to Prophecy Code 15335, grading, to clarify and change requirements related to grading and grading permits. This presentation will be given to us by Counselor George Handley, and is budgeted for 10 minutes.
Okay, well, if you remember, we talked about this briefly, feels like maybe it was two meetings ago, just to sort of get your general thumbs up on, I probably shouldn't use that phrase, thumbs down, no thumb.
Initial no thumb.
Yeah, just to get your general approval of the concept, to move forward and get some specific language, I don't think any of you have had a chance, however, to look at this specific language until now, so what we're essentially looking for is approval to just send this to the Planning Commission to get them to weigh in on it, and then we can, you know, wrestle with it in more detail if you'd like. Just to remind you, the three main issues here are that we are now requiring a project plan for any grading permit, as it says there in the first paragraph, that excludes anything less than 50 yards of material, so that wouldn't pertain to, you know, very small-scale projects. We have also, if you want to scroll down, it's all the changes are in blue, right? Is that, okay. We also have stiffer penalties for, stiffer bonding requirements for the purpose of protecting us against abuses that would get walked away from by the, by the person in question. And I'm in a little trouble, I have a copy that doesn't have any color on it, so I'm not quite sure where the language is about, it's under two capital A, does that make sense? Two capo, but it's capital, there it is. The amount, so the applicant shall post a performance bond which shall be equal to the greater of either the amount required under Prophecy Code for the landscaping described in some section, subsection of the section, and, if you want to scroll down just a little bit, an amount reasonably determined by the Department of Building Services to be adequate to cover the cost of landscaping described in the subsection. So the idea is that this would, would help prevent, disincentivize, you know, the idea that someone could come in, because they've already had to propose a project plan that includes a landscape plan, and because the bond is a little stiffer, and there are multiple advantages to this, one is that it gets multiple eyes to look at the project, it'll be more likely that the appropriate administrative hearing will happen, there's financial incentive to follow through with cleanup and revegetation at the conclusion of the project or if the project were to be abandoned at any point. Essentially, as you recall, this is, this is for the purposes of responding to what we learned from the gravel pit issue at the mouth of Freville Canyon. Any questions? Brian's and I heard, Dave, do you want to add anything?
Just a minor clarification, so I think these new requirements, we're just going to apply to grading, this involves cutting, is that--
That's correct, sorry, yeah. What's cutting or--
Sorry, go ahead. I didn't see the first as, I'm assuming there's something that does, makes this different, grading different than, say, paying a lot for construction at home? So oftentimes, we cut into a hill and take a lot more than 50 yards of gravel out, how would this, is that, does that fall into the same category then? Do we need those bonds or doing that? Or, or is with a permit for a home construction, is that different than a grading permit? I didn't, it moved the page for me to clarify.
Yeah, my understanding was that was separate, but Brian and I, Gary, Brian's not here to--
I thought they were, I thought cutting with 50 feet, that was, well, we had, I mean, they had to do it for the 50 feet.
If you do 50 yards, you have cubic yards. So for the purposes of grading, so it's any work including filling, cutting, excavation, or relocation of--
Well, but if you're doing a construction project, wouldn't you be doing, you'd be doing the project plan, landscaping plan anyway, right?
Not necessarily, it's building permit, but you don't have a bond to put, having a bond would be a new financial burden.
Yeah.
Because you already have a bond on the building, that, to protect--
Right, we didn't, we didn't talk about--
But it's throwing a whole lot more, a whole lot more, if it's going to be applied to construction, to go to house.
I believe I could be wrong on this, I believe that this is for projects that don't have building permits, this is usually early on in the process, it's more getting a plot, more kind of curb-ready to sell, and so, at least that's what I, my understanding for the gravel pit by the mouth of the canyon. It was, well, we want to sell this, we want to kind of get it into more buildable thing, but they didn't have a building permit because all they were doing was, was grading it, making it more presentable for sale, and so I believe what you're talking about is covered under the building permit, this is only for things that fall outside of building permits.
But I--
You really asked that.
I'm pretty sure that's true, I mean, we just never--
We should clarify that.
But we should clarify that, we didn't, I don't even think we ever, I think we were always assuming we were not talking about building permits.
But I just said, because most of the qualifications say, no grading, cutting, filling, or excavation of any kind shall be accomplished without first that I obtain a grading permit. Well, it's defining grading up there, but then a little further down in B, there's certain things that only apply to cutting operations, so I don't remember, yeah, right, down just a little farther, or up, I guess, there in B, applicants for grading permits that involve cutting, then have these additional requirements where they have to, have to submit the concept.
But is that a question of the committee of development?
More of an engineering.
Engineering.
It'd just be nice to keep that, there is a separation.
Well, and I apologize, I didn't get this until 15 minutes ago, so, and Brian's not here--
Thirty seconds, sorry.
Yeah, so we're, Brian's not here to answer that question, but--
We're just looking at--
We never, the engineer, you know, Dave Graves was at, at this meeting, and we, I think we were all along assuming we were talking about something separate from a building permit.
I asked Bryce as well, since he's insisting with the committee, he said essentially what you said, that any sort of development project, if it's on a hill, just building a home, you'd say you have a project plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the question? I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
Scroll up to the top. Just a couple of other places where it says, purpose of this section, grading shall be defined as any work including filling, cutting, excavation, or relocation of material which affects the contour, shape, slope, elevation, or drainage. I didn't know how that applied now to a home construction.
So, it depends, are you looking to cut into the hill to do a home, or are you talking about fill? Because I think, if I'm not mistaken--
You can do either one.
Right, right, but if you're going to cut to the mountainside, I think this is intended to do that, but we were trying not to affect, if you're going to fill, for example, on the west side, to try and then lift up, we're trying to avoid affecting that type of construction and so--
So occurring in your interpretation, if you're cutting into a hill, this would come into play?
Well, I think--
And we have to do these things.
That language wasn't changed, but I thought further down, it was changed, to make that clarification, and Brian's the one who drafted this, we're still, we got another meeting on Thursday with engineering and Tom Dev, to talk about these things, and we can--
Did we just note that that question was there from the last meeting?
Because it may have been the that, or at the very first sense might have been an and, in which case that makes it clear that it's, well, because even 50 cubic yards, that's a house, right? But make the, you're going to have another chance to look at this when it comes back on July 9th, if it's ready to go at that point, but it's also with the Planning Commission before that, is that-- Well, I guess that's the question, right? I mean, if, if, our, that's the next step, but if we need to wait and get this clarification from-- from a meeting on Thursday, why don't we just do that, and then, and then?
Do you want to come back on July 9th, or are we looking for?
We just need, we just need to decide whether we're putting this forward to the Planning Commission, is that?
That's, that's the next step.
Yeah. So, it's up to, it's up to the council, if you don't feel comfortable until we get an answer to that question.
I don't think that's a big question.
Yeah, that is.
For the forward.
Yeah, I'd suggest we get this cleared. Okay. Is everybody in agreement with that? Do we need to take a formal vote on, do we need a motion?
That's what you want to do, you wait, you want to come back on July 9th, or do you want it?
Yeah, I would be to wait and bring this back on July 9th after we get an answer to that question.
Then we'll have Brian here.
Yeah.
You don't actually need a motion.
Of course, of course.
Okay, so it'll just happen.
This hasn't been involved.
All right.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts? Thank you, Mr. Handley. Item 13 is a discussion about a zone change from public facilities to low-density residential. In the general plan amendment, from public facilities to residential, for 0.78 acres will allow four townhomes at 862 East Quail Valley Drive, in the Edgeworth neighborhood. This is presented by Mr. Robert Hills, Publicity Planner, and budgeted for 20 minutes.
Thank you very much. I think Mr. Handley and I went to the same fight, but I left before he did. So, if you'll remember, council members, this is a project proposed just northeast of Timview High School on Quail Valley Drive. The structure here is an existing office building that the applicant also owns, and the proposed parcel, the applicant would like to change the zoning, it's currently PF or Public Facilities Zone, and to change that to Low Density Residential, which would allow single-family attached dwellings or townhouses to be constructed on this property. Initially, the LDR zone would actually allow six dwelling units. Within the last hour or so, the applicant had emailed me with just the request to do four townhouses with no change indefinitely. They don't, he doesn't want at this time, or the foreseeable future, to ask for the additional two that he could develop on that property, and he has proffered a development agreement that kind of lays out these details, that would of course need to be reviewed by council churning, things like that. The development agreement that the applicant has proffered actually includes two development agreements. If you remember, there's a lot, there has been a lot of controversy over the last 40 years of that office building. There were some covenants, some CCNRs, covenants, conditions, and restrictions that were supposedly recorded against the property, but were recorded against a different property, and so to help alleviate that situation, the applicant has also proffered a development agreement to replace those existing CCNRs that would apply to the office building as well.
Can you clarify what you mean, replace with what?
So, the Hannah, Hannah, sorry, we have a Hannah in our office, Hannah is in his office. Can you bring up the development agreement that says 890 Quail Valley Drive Office Level? Okay. So, currently, the applicant has CCNRs that have been in existence for about 40 years that were recorded against this property, that limit the use of this building to, it defines it as executive office use, but doesn't allow for any other definition of that. And so there's been quite a bit of controversy between the neighborhood and the subsequent owners of this property over the last four decades, as to what that means and how it's regulated, who has regulatory authority over that, all that type of thing. So, as part of the applicant's project, he wanted to record something against the property that would be more binding, provide more definition, and things like that, and to just eliminate those existing CCNRs, incorporate the intent of it into a new development agreement with the council that could be more enforceable for any future landowners.
They signed to the proper ad.
Right. That's very important. That being said, this item is on for council tonight. However, I talked to the neighborhood chair a few minutes ago, she's currently in a different part of the country. They would really love the council to continue this item, so that they have a chance to really look over what the applicant is proposing again, to have the applicant come back and include the neighborhood. Of course, I'm sure that the applicant doesn't want that to happen, but that's in the purview of the council, of course. So that's kind of the project, but I'm available for any questions, anything that you might want to know.
Robert, where did you get this development agreement, this one?
So this development agreement, I asked the applicant for, and I got it about an hour ago.
So, I'd like to see that, and as I looked at the other development agreement, it didn't make a lot of sense. I mean, there was nothing to, I mean, nothing, I thought we can, it doesn't matter, it wasn't the city's job to enforce the development agreement anyway. But the bottom line is, what's the differences between the one that we had and what this one is? Do you see anything, is it actually more enforceable?
It provides additional clarification on what types of uses would be allowed in the business building, which I think is very helpful from an enforcement perspective, and then I think that's probably the biggest benefit. I did invite the applicant to attend this meeting just as an observer. If he has questions, he's here and ready to answer, but that's up to you folks as well. But I think that the fact that it actually, this development agreement actually applies to the property, and clarifies more of the uses permitted on that property, goes leaps and bounds above what's already existed.
Can you scroll down and show us what applies to this? So, what does this connection?
Hannah, can you scroll to section 3.3? And so, in this particular development agreement, that of course can be amended and continue to work back and forth, but the building is restricted to professional office use only with the following limitations. The building shall not be used for any of the following activities, uses, a call center, a sexual or intimate business, lodging, manufacturing, homeless shelter rehabilitation center, either for drug or alcohol, or behavior treatment. That was a previous application, that came before us. Video rental shop, I can't imagine why, prescription for us. And then just provides further clarification on the responsibilities of the applicant, and that type of thing. Again, this is draft one to us, and so it could be taken back and forth and amended as we see fit, but in my opinion, I think this goes further to help clarify the situation, but to properly represent the neighborhood, and what I've heard from them is that they would like some opportunity to weigh in and weigh out, and, excuse me, weigh in on what they have presented. Any other question?
I guess another question is why do you not, do you not refer this back to Planning Commission?
Well, initially, the Planning Commission was very comfortable with six townhome units, and given the change, they were supportive of what the applicant was doing, an increased density. We thought, since they already support six, I'm sure four would be fine, but we're welcome to send this back to them as well. I remember that the, where we left this was, there was a kind of a joint meeting between the city council members and the school board, and the city council had asked the school board to explore the option of purchasing this property to be used with Timview High School, see if it could be utilized that way. The applicant reached out to the school board, and then the school board responded that they were not interested at this time to purchase the property and to utilize it.
They weren't interested in the price, or what did you say?
They, the emails back and forth that I received was that, given its topography change, the irregularity of the site, of how it's shaped, and its location, it made it difficult to incorporate. I don't know if price was a factor.
I think it's between, between the school and the church, the church's property, and that made it awkward too, because the school doesn't own the church property, and so, yeah, they're between, so it makes it, made it difficult.
It does make it difficult to incorporate it into the, into the Timview property as it currently is.
One of the questions that they've had is, and I'd like some clarification on this, is parking on the street. And you, would you tell the, tell the council what you told me?
Right, yeah. So, currently, parking on Quail Valley Drive is not permitted by signage, and so I don't know if people are parking there unaware that it's not permitted, but I have driven up there several times in this, in this process. I haven't observed anybody parking on the street. I'm the one that's been parking on the street posting a sign for a few minutes. Whether parking on the street occurs at, my guess is that parking on the street would occur during activities at Timview High School, but in my observation, I haven't seen any parking on the street. But the neighbors have represented, have represented that there have been times when parking on the street has been a problem.
And if that is the case, as we talked about parking issues, it's a matter of a phone call.
It is a matter of a phone call. That has come up before, Mr. Rindert, and the response that the neighbors have given is when they call, it becomes a lower priority item, given that we have limited amount of resources, and during those times, resources have been diverted elsewhere.
Can you tell me how Timview parks? I've been also told that a lot of those people in the office building park at the high school, do they have it permitted for parking there in the high school? Do you know where?
They use, it's kind of Eppenford. I don't know if they do currently right now.
So I have, I have been up there in this process. I took three different trips up to the site at various times of the day when Timview was in session, during normal business hours. Each time that I went up there, I don't know if this is the norm, or if this is just a anomaly, but each time that I went up there, in the office building parking area, I noticed between 10 and 15 available stalls.
I drive it four or five times a day, so.
Oh, so you have a better perspective, Mr. Shor.
There's almost no parking on the right-hand side going out, unless a car stalls, or coming down, sometimes with those activities out of the homes, you'll see a few cars parked, but it is a big deal, it's extremely dangerous to park on that road.
It is very dangerous.
You could be crazy to waterpark.
So that, that's been a constant concern that the neighbors have raised, that traffic on Quail Valley Drive. Motorists are often coming down the hill very, very quickly. I can understand how that happens, you just don't necessarily observe what the speed limit is, and all of a sudden you're going 40 miles an hour around the curve, that can be concerning, so.
That's not an issue of these poor houses.
I can't see how that's related, given their, and the applicant provided a parking study that concluded that same decision, that, you know, that the parking and the traffic that this project itself would generate wouldn't necessarily be contributory to the existing traffic.
In the agreement, I noted there was some discussion at one time and all that, in the, as we talked, that he was considering putting in some calming, traffic calming measures, possibly a solar sign that would help people recognize the speed, that you were willing to do that at some point, and I don't know if that's part of the agreement as far as any traffic calming opportunities in that development agreement that he would be willing to offer.
I haven't seen any in this one, but I'm sure that that's something that the applicant could work out with the council.
Mr. Shor, I think I've completed. Could you forward that communication from the school district that had this statement about their interest or lack of interest in, I'll be able to see that.
Unless the applicant forward that to you directly.
The only traffic calming measure Gary that works is the Traffic Officer Park.
That works well, doesn't it?
Was it shorty, you used to park there? I've been doing it for 40 years, so the only way you could calm traffic on that road is to put a toll on it, because.
Well, I do slow down when I see that sign that tells me how fast I'm going.
Yeah, so this is a question.
So it helps me sometimes.
I wish, I wish it worked better.
Yeah.
So how do you feel this comports with the neighborhood plan?
As staff reviewed this, we came to the conclusion that it, that it does help support the goals of the general plan to provide for housing in the neighborhood. The neighborhood definitely disagrees with that in the type of housing that has been proposed. Neighborhood would much rather see just single-family development. Under the traditional R110 zoning, which is across the street and in other parts of the neighborhood, the applicant could only provide three dwelling units, three single-family detached dwellings on the site, given the size of the site.
And, and the topography? Because that becomes, it's such a weird piece, that could you actually get three on there with the way it's configured?
I haven't laid it out myself, but I think that would be possible.
Okay.
You might have some interesting shaped lots, but I think that would be possible. You might have a lot of hillside in the backyard.
Is there, so, there have been concerns, is there, often are obviously property values being compromised by something like this, and what, I mean, I know that's a very vague category, right, that often doesn't have a whole lot of data to pack it out, that isn't to say that it's not a real concern, but with a side of the street that has a school, that has an office building, and has an awkwardly shaved lot in between, and the seminary, and it has an awkwardly lot shaved in between, it seems to me very hard to, much harder to make that argument than if it were plopping, you know, four attached homes down right, surrounded by single homes. I mean, you have any sort of background on similar kinds of scenarios? Is there, is there anything that we can point to other than intuition on this, that that is either a strong argument or a weak argument? I mean, it just seems like it's a concern, and I don't, I don't want to be callous to those concerns of the neighbors, but I don't want to be just reacting to something that doesn't actually hold up, right? I mean, I, because it does seem to me that if you don't like the office building that's there, and it's been there for 40 years, and it's owned by somebody who's running a responsible business there, you know, that's, that's, it is what it is, and it may not be what you wanted or liked, but, but it doesn't seem like we can go back on that, and so then it's a question of, well, so what are we going to do with the space in between, and is this a good use of this space? What are alternatives to that that could be better or worse? And I don't, I don't see. And I don't see anything that drags, in this proposal anyway, I don't see anything that drags down the property values. If anything, it seems like it sort of at least shores up an empty space that will have a functional value that adds something to the area.
I think that's a really good observation. I don't have any data or any anecdotal evidence of how the property values would be affected. These are four-bedroom townhouses being constructed in northeast Provo. So to staff, it seems like a good use of an infill property that has remained vacant for four decades provides housing opportunities that we kind of constantly hear about. It also provides a different type of housing that might not be readily available in this particular neighborhood right across the street. But I think that you bring up a really good point, that there is a degree of separation between the rest of the neighborhood. This is a piece of property that is sandwiched between an existing office building, an existing public school, and seminary building, and the applicant has laid it out as a possible use for this infill, and it seems to work well. The only thing that I can say that would be kind of related to this is, several years ago, the council might remember that there was a project that was proposed, kind of in the Lakeview neighborhood, where an applicant wanted to put twin homes adjacent to an existing neighborhood, and there was a bit of trepidation on the part of the neighborhood that would these twin homes that were being generally marketed toward people 55 and older, would they be compatible with an existing single-family neighborhood? The council went ahead and re-zoned that property to allow that particular use, and going out to neighborhood meetings now, those units are very large, beautiful twin homes, and have incorporated quite nicely into that neighborhood. And when you go to the neighborhood meetings, it seems like there's a good mix of people there, and the existing neighbors have been quite satisfied with the way that that particular development has assimilated into their existing neighborhoods. So I think that's just one example that I can think of. There are probably others that might not have such a happy ending.
We've got a comment here, and then we really should move on.
Well, I said I've observed them all for 40 years. I can't even imagine building 40 units on it. I mean, I'm not a planner. There's a seven-railway alongside, there's an office on the other side.
This is how they could do it, George.
Hard for you to imagine.
There's a plan right there that's different.
Hard for you to imagine for me, so that, given the traffic, given the snow in the winter, given all those.
How big are those? The other question I had, this is a PUD with, are they for sale or for rent?
The applicant has indicated that these are for rent.
Sometimes people are afraid of that, and sometimes I think that if you have one owner that wants to take care of his property...
There's a B2B right there. What kind of B2B?
B2B? What do you mean?
Airbnb or English.
Oh. I don't know that that's an Airbnb. That's not where I'd stay if I were to do it.
I'm just saying, if it's for rent, you could easily use that way.
Oh, it's not zoned?
I just, it's a curb business, I saw that.
Male employees.
I thought it was new for older, I was surprised it's for rent.
So these are about 14, 30, something like that?
We don't have anything in that whole area that's for rent like that, in the whole neighborhood, there's nothing like that. Just one arched road hills.
So is that a need that we have in that area then?
Could be, could be an area, but there's nothing like it right now.
My understanding is that there are some additional townhomes farther up Quail Valley on Quail Valley Circle or something like that.
I think there are.
I don't know if they're owner-occupied, but any, the question of rent versus ownership is something that comes up often, and anybody that owns their home can rent it.
All right, thank you very much. And this will be for us this evening. It'll be the first time we've heard it since it was recommended, since it's heard by the planning commission. Item number 14, discussion regarding a request for an ordinance text amendment to consolidate Chapter 14, Point 30, S supplementary residential overlay zone with Chapter 14, 46, A accessory apartment overlay zone, citywide application. We have this studied for 10 minutes and will be presented by Brian Mack.
Thank you. Passing out kind of comparison between the two overlays we have. We have the A or accessory unit overlay, the S or supplemental overlays. Generally, we look at that as apartment overlay and student overlay, is sometimes the way they're thought of. The elderly's put on there just as a comparison, that's not really part of this, or consolidation. But the proposal is to consolidate those two ordinances, this shows, you know, what the result would be on the second part of that. This item, I think you had scheduled several weeks ago. The planning commission, in their review of it, though, did take into account a lot of the comments that were made by Paul Evans of the Pleasantview Neighborhood. We had a study meeting where he went through all those comments, and made classifications to the original ordinance, added some areas and lines in there, principally to clarify those items. The planning commission recommended approval of this item. However, they added two things they would like the council to address further. The first one relates to parking, where they feel that some of the parking standards seem excessive, where you have people renting some of these units that don't have two cars. There's no allowance to look at the particular case of how many cars do those people need. They feel the result is we pave a lot more of our neighborhood, the lots, than they might otherwise be necessary, and that takes away from the residential feel of the neighborhood perhaps more than even having the renters in a unit. The second one dealt with the licensing of the units, and where now we would have a rental license and an initial inspection, then a follow-up inspection every three years. I think that was one of the principal concerns of the Pleasantview Chair.
So for the layperson to read that it doesn't require a license, that's technically correct. It doesn't require a rental dwelling license, but it does require a permit that's renewed every three years.
The new one does. Oh, the current, yeah, but the inspection part of it is the key.
Well, but right now, if you're going to do it legally, you get an inspection when you create it. You don't have an inspection every three years after that like the rental dwelling license, but you do have a permit that is renewed every three years. So we are licensing through the permit process, it's just not the rental dwelling license.
Right, there are two aspects to that, and one was a concern for ones which have been grandfathered and continued on, how much they now have to spend if they suddenly have to have an inspection upgrade to building codes.
Right, I'm just saying that to say on there that it doesn't require a license right now, actually it requires a permit.
Okay, thank you. I guess just on the other, a lot of the concern was some of these non-conforming ones now being required to spend money to bring those up to certain codes. And I think our staff didn't have as much concern, because we feel that probably all our units should meet safety codes, you know, basically if they don't have the egress windows, and they don't have a lot of other things that normally a home, you know, would require for safety purposes. And for that purpose, the chair asked, you know, if the, we couldn't do some test cases and inspections to see, okay, how does this really play out, you know, once we start doing those inspections? And so those were the main things that the planning commission passed on, that either delaying your enactment or delaying the actual, if you approved it, then, you know, delay the, what the date, what do you call that?
Inaction.
Yeah. That it be delayed until that could be done, you know, might have a better understanding of those impacts.
So I appreciate Paul's concerns, and one of the concerns when people hear that we're never going to have a safety inspection is that you would have to meet today's more stringent code rather than what was in place 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago when the thing was originally established. And that is not the intent to meet today's code. It is a separate safety standard that has just certain items they look for, and only those items. And the windows in bedrooms you get out is one of the big ones.
Right, I think there's a list put together that starts detailing what that is, because that was a good question, is what would the inspectors actually even consider in their inspections? And I believe that list of an upstate in Gary that could work on to kind of set out as to what those elements would be.
It's in licensing. It's in Title VI.
So sorry, you're there.
Twenty-five, I think, Section 100.
And the Pleasantview neighborhood chair.
I think the philosophy on this is renting a residential unit is a commercial activity. So the rental dwelling license is basically a business license. It is a business license, and so I think that's kind of the philosophy behind that.
And one of the things we did change, and we haven't mentioned that one, is licenses, the fee goes toward the licensing, not toward the inspection. There's an issue on that regarding how state code is to work that aloud, and so I think there's a clarification made, something. Sorry, just throwing that in while you were there.
If I could just share some thoughts on this, I support this. I think even, I think that the consolidation is, it's good, it makes it clear, it's an appropriate code, but it's not substantive. To me, the substantive thing is, if you'll scroll down, this is how it is now, this is what is changing too. We are now allowing detached dwelling, and that is, to me, that's a pretty big deal. It's a pretty big departure from what we've done in the past.
One of those issues, still, this clarifies the one where the unit could be on the main floor rather than it could be in the basement.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, the allowing of a detached dwelling to be an accessory, to me, is a big deal. I think that's a good thing. I think it has potential to be a good thing. I think that's one way that the city can help address the housing shortage that we And you've heard me say this, and I hope no one takes this personally, you've heard me say this in the past few meetings when we talked about code enforcement and zoning My concern here is that in the past, accessories, and this has evolved over 10, 20, 30 years, I think ideally, an accessory allows a new family to buy a house early on before they would otherwise be able to afford it. They can, you know, if they're a small family at that time, they can rent out the basement. And then later on, when they have more income and they have more space needs, they can stop renting, and they can expand that space. And then 20 years later, their family is shrinking down in size, and maybe they have, you know, less income, more and more needs to conserve, and so now they can contract back and start renting out the basement. I mean, accessory apartments have some great properties, great characteristics that make them very valuable to the community. The problem is, is over 30 or so years in my part of the neighborhood, in my part of the city, is that they have become, many are de facto duplexes, you no longer have that owner-occupied aspect to it. And, you know, someone comes in, they see, oh, well, this person's renting out the basement, so I'm going to do that as well. So they, hopefully just uninformed, hopefully it's not lawful, just ignorant or whatever, but hopefully they just, they don't know any better, but they fix up their basement and they start renting it. Or perhaps, you know, they actually go through the process, they did the permit, they put everything they need to meet the standards, and then they sell it to someone. And that person occupies it, rents out the basement, then, you know, maybe they go on a sabbatical, or they do something, and so now it's being rented from top to bottom, and they rent and they sell it to someone who never had any intention to live there, they bought it as an investment. And so then it becomes, it becomes a de facto duplex, and that gets replicated. People look at it and say, oh, well, they're doing it, I'm going to do it too, when I move out. And so with the lack of enforcement, this has become a negative, a net negative in my area. I believe you all remember when Kirby Snigman first was elected as the North Park neighborhood chair, and he came at the public comment portion of our meeting, or it may have been me, but it's probably, but I think he just came as a public comment portion, but he kind of, he told the council how it was, that, you know, we needed expecting changes as the demographics change and all that. And he was an urban city planner, and is now hired to run the planning department in Texas. And he was probably on the more progressive side of people in Provo, and he was on the verge of requesting removal of the A overlay for North Park because of the negative impacts that can add.
Lack of enforcement.
Because, let's say, lack of enforcement. So I'm hopeful that that's changing, that we're getting, we're going to have more efficient, more effective enforcement. But when I look at this, particularly at those change in detached dwelling units being a part of this, and thinking of, I would be shocked if more than two people in my neighborhood know of this change, and we're contemplating passing it tonight. I don't think the city has done well, I don't think we've done what we should if we're seriously considering making this change. I don't think we've done enough public outreach to let people know that this is coming. We sometimes talk about, well, maybe we should expand these overlays, because they can be very good tools. But we say, oh, well, we wouldn't do that unless the neighborhood, you know, comes out and there's good support for, you know, among the neighborhood, we wouldn't just do this. And I feel like if we were to move forward with the proposal tonight, we would just be doing this to everywhere that has an S overlay or an A overlay without many people even knowing that this is coming, so.
We should clarify, the RC zone is also an A overlay, allows the A overlay within it, so RCs.
All RCs, yes.
I would just add that the enforcement is an issue. I mean, it's an issue with anything, whether it's Airbnb, any kind of illegal activity. And I believe part of the lack of understanding and the illegal activity has been because we haven't had these with an RDL. And I've heard you say before that if you're going to rent your house, any portion of your house, get an RDL.
The licensing should help tremendously on some of the portions.
Right. And then it helps educate people and say, well, if you're going to do it, you do it safely, because you're inviting the public into your home, and it's like renting your car out to somebody, but it's never passed safety inspections and it has upgrades.
So, and I kind of, I've blown past the time, and it's been my fault, so I apologize to that. Just, I want to be clear, I support this, I think this is a good thing, I just don't know, I don't feel like I'm ready to support it tonight. But it's what we vote for tonight, so we can have more conversation then. Any other comments or thoughts before we move on?
Yeah, I wouldn't vote for it tonight either, but... But I think we ought to make sure that Karen sends the highlights of the changes, including the detached part, and say, you know, in some neighborhoods, this doesn't affect you because you don't have an ARNS overlay. But if you do have an ARNS overlay, it's going to affect you sooner or later.
We can certainly make the changes on that licensing so that it's better understood.
Thank you. On to the last item of the meeting. Item fifteen is a discussion on a request for zone change of property two point one two acres of real property from R one ten to a project redevelopment option zone generally located at thirteen twenty South State Street in the Green Creek neighborhood. This is budgeted for twenty minutes and we have Mr. Robert Mills back with us.
Thank you. So thank you again, council members. This is a request by the applicant to rezone a piece of property in southeast Provo. The project site is here. This is South State Street, thirteen twenty south is here. If you're familiar with the Provo School District's new bus barn, that's directly south of this proposed project. And a townhome project is adjacent to the north. This particular rezone request is a second attempt. The applicant had originally asked for the medium density residential zone, which is the kind of what's on the general plan and that future land use map for the, for this particular project area. The applicant is proposing to construct a project of sixty-four two-bedroom condo units. These would be for sale. And the applicant has gone to great lengths to secure this project, be able to be backed by FHA mortgages. They have had to submit a great deal of documentation in order to do that and in order to target the market that they are looking for, being younger families that are trying to get into the real estate market, that wouldn't necessarily be able to afford something more expensive, but can now enter into owning their own piece of real estate specifically because these are backed by FHA. One request that the applicant had made initially was that the MDR zone requires a parking ratio of one point two five stalls per unit. And the applicant is able to provide in this space one hundred and thirty parking stalls. And so they were slightly under the parking requirement. And so if you'll remember, that was originally the reason that the request to amend the reduction in parking came to you folks in the first place. There were some concerns by other neighborhood chairs in the city regarding amending the parking allowances based on one particular project. And the recommendation was that the applicant ask for a rezone to a pro zone. And so the applicant went back and did that and has asked that this project, and this project site be rezoned to the pro zone. And they, there was an existing pro zone already in code that accomplishes what the applicant would like to do. And that is fourteen fifty, number thirty. We have a number of pro zones within our code already. So we don't necessarily encourage people to use pro zones, but in this case, because it was already within our code system, we thought that would be a good use to make sure that the project is specific, is site specific, rather than making changes that could apply There are a couple of things that I just wanted to note about this project. This is a proposed site plan. Shows that the buildings are going to be four stories in height with four units per floor, a total of one hundred and thirty parking stalls. This is another site plan. These are some, the applicant has actually completed a project very, almost identical to this at two locations in Orem and has had great success. This is just a visual representation of what these units would look like. The applicant will probably present to you tonight some nicer photos because the landscaping has been completed, you know. I just wanted to make mention of a few things. This particular pro zone is consistent with the future land use map and that medium density style and type of housing development. There are a few things that this pro zone would allow that exceed what the applicant is actually asking for. And so the applicant has proffered a development agreement to limit the specific number of units that can be developed and require a certain number of parking stalls. So given this site, the pro zone would allow one dwelling unit per five hundred square feet of lot area. That would actually allow one hundred and eighty-four dwelling units on the site. The applicant has specifically written into the development agreement that no more than sixty-four two-bedroom condo units would be developed on this site. It also, this particular zone also allows for a greater parking reduction. The parking ratio would be point seven stalls per bedroom. In this case, only ninety parking stalls would be required for this particular development. But the applicant has put into their development agreement that they will provide one hundred and thirty stalls, which is a ratio of two point zero three stalls per unit. We, staff felt that given the size of these particular units, that two parking stalls would be sufficient for this particular development. We were happy that the applicant did not want to go to a parking ratio of point seven. We've had some experience with that and that has not been so great. So for these reasons, we as staff recommended approval to the planning commission of this particular zone with adopted development agreement and some conditions that were in the staff report, particularly that at least sixty percent of the units be owner occupied. That would ensure that the FHA backed mortgages would remain in place for future owners of these units.
Robert, question on that. City is, we're really unable to enforce that in the past. What affects this thing that we can do it for today?
So that's a great question. And in our staff report, we actually brought out the fact that those types of conditions have been difficult to enforce. In this particular case, because it is to the advantage of the owners of the development, the condo owners themselves, to keep their FHA status intact, we felt that it would be, in this particular case, it would work well. Also, the developer, or the applicant has indicated, and we'll go into this extensively tonight, that they, even though it's a condo project, they have a very efficient onsite management team that regulates what's going on there. Another limitation that the applicant has proffered in the development agreement that's typically hard to enforce is that each unit will be limited to a family or two adults. Typically, that's something that would be difficult to enforce, given our current occupancy of three singles or a family. But their experience and their management team have indicated that because these owners are so concerned with their financing, they want to make sure that they don't lose that. And so they're very quick to turn in their neighbors. But the planning commission heard this item, did recommend approval of this particular zone, and the neighborhood has heard this proposal as well. Neighborhood Chair spoke in favor of that. Available for any questions?
So to the south is the bus depot?
Correct.
To the north, will be townhomes?
Correct.
To the west? To the west, will be more townhomes?
Mainly to the west is the power substation that Provo City has in the west of that will be working.
And then to the east?
This is vacant currently.
Still by your driving site?
It's the old driving site. This is the old Amish market site.
Okay. What did you say was to the north?
Townhomes, and townhomes here, and then the city's new park. It's just north of that, right?
What's the zone north, sorry. What's the zone north? Is it LDR or is it MDR?
It's MDR. I think it's an MDR.
Is it zero?
LDR.
LDR?
Yeah. It's an LDR.
Oh, well, it's a pro zone.
I think it's a pro zone. That kind of proved it.
But it's LDR. Yeah, it's LDR.
So I'm kind of excited for this to happen in southeast Provo because frankly, I would be excited anywhere in Provo because these units, I believe the market price is one hundred and eighty thousand. And nothing is out there that's for sale for an owner. And this would be a great opportunity to get young families or whoever is going to live in them at a price they can afford, rather than something that's just more rentals. It'll be, well, like some people are concerned about having longer tendency in the neighborhood so that they can be the leadership in the local organizations. So this is just good all around. And the fact that they were just fairly short on the parking, yes, it did give rise to, why is it we don't have a mechanism to make some kind of plan or adjustments for residential projects? We can do it for commercial projects, but, so we are considering the transportation demand management plans. And I think commit with a plan in the future on other projects because this one's just going to the Provo. We need to be a little bit more flexible if we can find a way to work with people that are coming close, but they, you know, when you're just so rigid, this project didn't meet that standard by six or eight stalls.
It was a total of fourteen. And in order to accommodate the number of parking stalls that the traditional MDR requirement would have for this particular development, coming up with fourteen stalls on the site, which would probably be very difficult, given the open space requirements and the size of the site, or to lose, I think it was seven units, which, given the way that these are laid out, they would essentially lose two floors of available units to people.
Any other questions? Thoughts? Mr. Mills, you, the municipal council will consider the motion to close the meeting. Mr. Mills, would you give us?
The reason why we might do that?
Yes, I understand there's an issue regarding water rights that has pending litigation and also the personalization of which is qualified.
Motion?
Move.
Mr. Mills? All in favor? You haven't seen him.
I did.